Okay, I think we should start. So I'll call the meeting to order. Can we have the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Stewart chairing the meeting. Councillor Carr. Councillor De Genova. Councillor Fry is on leave of absence on civic business. Councillor Swanson. Councillor Hardwick is leave of absence from six to eight on civic business. Councillor Weeb. Councillor Boyle. Councillor Dominado is not here at the moment. Councillor Lai. And Councillor Kirby Young is absent. You have quorum. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Before we start, I would like to welcome you here to the chambers in your first public hearing at the City of Vancouver. So welcome clerk to the chambers. Yes, you're welcome. So first, I'd like to acknowledge that we're on the unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish and Sabatoos, and we thank them for having cared for this land since time immemorial. Councillor Boyle, we're going to move into -- oh, wait, sorry, I'll go through this procedural thing and I'll get to you. So in order to avoid procedural uncertainties which arose at a previous public hearing due to a loss of quorum while in committee of the whole, the city clerk is advised that while counsel is required under section eighteen dot thirteen of the procedure bylaw to move to a motion to go into committee of the whole at a public hearing, it is not required to sit as a committee of the whole during the hearing. Therefore, it is her advice that the motion go into committee of the whole to be put to a vote and failed by the council. So would someone like to move a motion to go into the committee of the whole, please? Councillor Boyle. Secondar. Councillor Weeb. Thanks. So again, it would be great if this motion failed. So all in favor? Nobody? All opposed? Thanks very much. The motion has failed. So good work, everybody. Before we begin, Councillor Boyle, you have a -- let's put -- go right ahead, I'll put your mic on.
A point of personal privilege, which is just to state our legal department advised that I stated at the commencement of this hearing that the political party I'm affiliated with tweeted in support of this project, but I was not involved in that tweet, and I am here with an open mind, as is the responsibility of councillors to hear information and comments and make up my mind from there.
Great. Thanks very much for that. So noted. So before we begin, I'll have some announcements to make. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the application being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the summary and recommendation. And I'll kind of nudge people along, just to remind folks as we're going through this hearing about the five minutes that are for the merit of the project. We have sometimes drifted off in the policy discussions, but this project, we'd like, of course, in all future projects, we like to focus just on the project at hand. Speakers may only speak once, but any additional comments can be submitted in writing to public hearing@vancouver.ca. That's publichearing@vancouver.ca. Those speaking on behalf of three or more persons or three or more organizations will have up to eight minutes to speak. The person or representative of the organization must also be present and must not be speakers themselves. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we'll recess and reconvene the meeting tomorrow, Thursday, February 21st, beginning at 3:00 p.m. That's important, that's a slightly different time for us, so if we don't finish tonight, it'll be tomorrow at 3:00 p.m. that we start here in council chamber. So rezoning sixteen thirty-six Clark Drive and thirteen twenty-one to thirteen ninety-five East First Avenue. The clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received. Please go ahead.
This is an application by HDR CEI Architecture Associates, Inc. to rezone sixteen thirty-six Clark Drive and thirteen twenty-one to thirteen ninety-five East First Avenue from I two Industrial District and RM four N Multiple Dwelling District to CD one Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a ten-story mixed-use building containing ninety social housing units, a social enterprise space, and a withdrawal management center with up to twenty short-term transitional beds. The site is located in the Britannia Woodlands subarea of the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan, a maximum height of thirty-six point six meters, or one hundred and twenty feet, and a floor space ratio of three point two-two are proposed. The general manager of planning, urban design, and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions as set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. Since this application was referred to public hearing, council has received one hundred and fifty-one pieces of correspondence in support, seventy-four pieces of correspondence in opposition, and one piece regarding other aspects related to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to three p.m. today.
Thanks so much. So council, before we get going with the staff presentation, just to let you know a few things, that this presentation will take up to forty-five minutes, it has a lot of embedded information in it because of the nature of the project. I was hoping that we have so many speakers lined up to speak that we might waive council questions for this round. I'll just leave that with you, and then we can decide at the end of the presentation as to what we'd like to do. But at this point, I'll call on staff to please go ahead with the presentation.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sarah Crowley. I'm the rezoning planner for this application at Clark Drive and East First Avenue. I will be presenting the rezoning proposal this evening, and following my presentation, staff and the applicant team will provide further detail related to the proposed uses and the existing tenants on site. To begin, the rezoning proposal is an outcome of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Vancouver, B.C. Housing, and Vancouver Coastal Health, and this memorandum of understanding was approved by council on May second, 2018. It sets out a framework to deliver a mixed-use development that would address the affordable housing shortage and addiction-related services needed in Vancouver. The site will remain under city ownership and will be leased to B.C. Housing. The subject site is located on the north side of East First Avenue between Clark Drive and McLean Drive in the Granview Woodlands neighborhood. The site slopes up approximately thirty feet from Clark Drive to McLean Drive and occupies a half-block. It is approximately forty-four thousand nine hundred square feet in size. This slide shows the view of the site looking northeast. This is a split-zoned property comprising of I two zone and RM four N zones. We received a question from council at referral asking for a breakdown of percentage of the site comparing I two zone to RM four N, and I can tell you now that twenty-two percent of that land is currently I two, with the remaining seventy-eight percent being under RM four N zoning. The current I two zone is currently vacant, and the remaining RM four N portion of the site is currently occupied by eighteen residential rental units. If the rezoning is approved, then a tenant relocation plan will be required as part of the relocation of the existing tenants. This slide shows the proposed commitments under the tenant relocation plan. Please note that about fourteen of the eighteen units currently on site are occupied. Alison Dunnett from our housing division will speak to the requirements of the tenant relocation plan in due course after my presentation. But just at a glance, this slide shows what is being committed to under the TRP. There will be financial compensation provided, a minimum of four months' notice to end the tenancy, assistance with providing and finding alternative accommodations, and the first right of refusal for those eligible for the social housing units. The rezoning proposal, if approved, would contain three main uses on site. The first would be ninety social housing units would be built by the applicant B.C. Housing and subleased to a nonprofit operator. A five-thousand-square-meter withdrawal management center is to be operated by Vancouver Coastal Health on a twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week basis. A two-hundred-and-ninety-square-meter social enterprise center is to be subleased by the city to a nonprofit operator. The elevation presented here shows the proposed building from East First Avenue, highlighting the slope and grade, and changes to the building height from west to east. The height along Clark Drive is ten stories and drops to three stories to allow for rooftop green space low enough to limit shadowing onto the properties immediately to the north across the lane, and then increasing in height to six stories fronting McLean Drive. The proposed density of the site is three point two-two floor space ratio, or FSR, and the site contains underground vehicle and bike parking to be accessed from the lane. To clarify, this slide contains the definition of social housing as defined under the city's zoning and development bylaw, and under that definition, you will see that social housing needs to meet the following criteria, that being minimum of thirty percent of the dwelling units to be rented at or below housing income limits, owned by a nonprofit corporation or government agency, and a tenure secured via a housing agreement. The residential component of the site therefore meets the definition of social housing in this case. In the same vein, this slide shows the site-specific social housing details as proposed by B.C. Housing. Ninety units with approximately forty percent of those units to be available as family units, that's two or more bedrooms. The applicant is interested in deepening the level of affordability by providing approximately fifty percent of the units at or below hills rental rates. This exceeds the social housing definition requirements, and the remainder of these units will be rented at current market rates. If approved, a nonprofit operator will be appointed by B.C. Housing to manage the building. As this graphic shows, the entrance to the social housing building will be located off of McLean Drive. This slide shows the average proposed rental rates, including hills and CMHC rates where available, and incomes needed to afford these units. Alison Dunnett, again from our housing division, will elaborate upon this after my presentation. As indicated in an earlier slide, the withdrawal management center will be managed and operated by Vancouver Coastal Health. Depending on the nature of the programs, the facility will be operated for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The clinical space will occupy the podium and full length of the building footprint, as indicated in red on the slide. The types of services proposed will include fifty-one inpatient beds, outpatient and home-based medical support, twenty transitional beds between treatment and longer-term housing arrangements, and an academic training and teaching hub for staff and medical best practice. The site provides a good opportunity to consolidate withdrawal management services, which are presently dispersed across the city. The project, if approved, would deliver a variety of treatment programs currently provided by Vancouver Coastal Health through their Vancouver Detox Center located at East Second Avenue, along with relocating temporary detox beds from the downtown east side into a permanent location. In operation for over thirty years, the existing facility located on East Second Avenue, which is approximately ten blocks away from the subject site, is coming to the end of its usable life without substantial reinvestment. And council, you will hear more about the proposed programs through the applicant team's presentation tonight. The proposal also includes a social enterprise space, which will be accessed off of Clark Drive, noted in red on this slide. The space will focus on indigenous health and wellness programs along with economic training. The programs will be delivered by a service provider and will be appointed in consultation with the Metro Vancouver Aboriginal Executive Council and city staff. The regional contact statement, official development plan, was adopted by council in conjunction with a commitment to Metro Vancouver, in part to protect the industrial land base within the region. As part of the rezoning proposal and amendment to the regional contact statement, ODP, map shown on the slide, would convert approximately nine thousand seven hundred square feet, or just over naught point naught nine hectares, of industrial land to general urban in order to permit the residential and institutional uses uses on the existing I-2 portions of the site. Within the provisions of the ODP and the agreements with Metro Vancouver, the city is permitted to convert a small percentage of the industrial area into general urban use, which permits greater flexibility of permitted uses, including residential. Should Council approve this rezoning, an amendment to the RCS ODP is contained in the recommendations and in Appendix D of the Council Report. The site is located within the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan area, which was approved by Council back in 2016. The creation of the community plan was a four-year public process, the largest public engagement exercise undertaken in the city's history, and included the creation of a city's assembly to inform that process. The rezoning-enabling policy is the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan. In particular, I draw attention to Section 7.1.3 of the plan, which supports modest increases in heightened density beyond the provisions of the plan for 100% non-market housing proposals. The increased zoning provisions are to assist with a project's financial viability and are considered in relation to the plan objectives and the neighborhood context. Also on the slide are supporting policies such as the Caring for All and Healthy City Strategy, which complements the proposed health and wellness functions of the Withdrawal Management Center. This slide is loca-- pardon me. This site is located within the Britannia Woodlands subarea of the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan, which provides direction on the redevelopment potential of the existing RM-4N zone. The plan restricts residential uses in this area to secured rental properties, with a form of development to a maximum of six stories in height and a density of 2.4 FSR. As noted earlier, modest additions in height and density may be considered beyond these maximums for 100% non-market residential proposals. Further, the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan supports the creation of housing for vulnerable residents in Section 7, and supporting the creation of addiction facilities in Section 13 within the Grandview Woodlands neighborhood. In addition, the incorporation of health and wellness services for local Indigenous was strongly encouraged within the plan. This slide shows the rezoning process and the opportunities where public input was built into the timeline. To address displacement of existing tenants, tenant meetings were also occurring before and during the rezoning process to outline the TRP objectives. Staff will continue to engage the tenants until the TRP plan is finalized and executed if approved. In addition, due to the nature of the uses, a broad spectrum of stakeholders and organizations were contacted to provide feedback throughout the rezoning process. And this slide shows just a number of stakeholders and key organizations consulted by the applicant and staff teams during the process, consultation with these organizations related to items around the delivery of health services, and will continue throughout the process to the occupancy of that building. Also, the development permit process will provide another opportunity for the local area to engage with city staff on the final design of the building. A city-led open house was undertaken in June of last year, where staff and the applicant team were available to answer questions. Approximately 190 people attended the event, and over 94 feedback forms were collected on the day from members of the public. In addition, the public submitted over 400 emails regarding the rezoning proposal from the date of the rezoning submission in May right through to referral in January of this year. This slide provides a high-level overview of the public comments received during this timeline. Many of the comments supporting the project responded positively to the delivery of social housing units, onsite community health services, and social enterprise space, noting the appropriate location of these uses along with the proposed building design and neighborhood fit. On the other side, comments noting concerning aspects of the application cited similar issues regarding location, neighborhood fit, building design, parking, crime and safety issues, and questioned how the proposal appeared to the Grandview Woodlands pace-of-change policy. It's important to note that many of the comments received contained both support and concern for specific aspects of this proposal. We received a question from Council during referral, asking staff what the overall percentage of support versus concern was from all respondents during this time, and whether these respondents lived in the Grandview Woodlands area. We can state that almost 70% of the total respondents we received were in support of the project. Identifying the location of respondents is not always feasible, since we don't require respondents to supply their mailing address. However, for those that did provide their information, we can indicate that on the Grandview Woodlands area, approximately 52% of those submitted concerns and 48% were in support. The Grandview Woodlands pace-of-change policy was an item discussed and commented on by a number of respondents. Many questioned whether the proposal was adhering to the pace-of-change policy, since the site contains 18 existing rental units. The intent of the policy is obviously to protect and encourage reinvestment in existing rental stock. While there are 18 existing rental units on-site, these properties are to be replaced with 90 secured social housing units. Staff therefore recommend that Council waive the application of the pace-of-change policy, as in this case, as this policy was never intended to impede the delivery of 100% social housing projects. The following three slides, which I am going to present to you, show the urban design parameters envisaged under the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan, and how these were interpreted as part of this development. This first slide before you shows the building form and massing envisaged under the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan. Regarding the height, the plan envisaged that an RM-4N site can achieve a height of up to 65 feet, and the building massing is in the form of three T-shaped buildings on this particular site, as you can see at the bottom right. The proposed massing in this rezoning interprets the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan in terms of the desired outcomes and the urban design performance, rather than strictly replicating the stipulated form. In order to respond to this mixed-use nature of the building and the clinical programming space required, which is contained within the building and is needed as a large floor place along the entire length of the building. To provide further penetration of sunlight across the site and to the adjacent properties to the north, 110-foot-wide rooftop podium has been provided to break up the massing where a T-shaped apartment form would have been envisaged under the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan. You see this here in the slide. So, over time, the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan envisaged that the surrounding area will be redeveloped or may be redeveloped, and as a result, this slide before you shows that the building potential around the site, what it may look like into the future. The proposed building height of the development doesn't excessively exceed the building height in the area in the future. An initial rezoning application was submitted to staff on 1st of May, 2018. After proceeding through to the city-led open house and urban design panel, and also staff's technical review, the applicant responded to the public and staff feedback and submitted a revised application package on August 23, 2018. The changes are outlined as numbers on this slide. Number one, as you can see there, the rooftop podium was widened to decrease any shadowing onto properties directly to the north. Number two shows increased setbacks along McLean Drive for an increased public relim opportunity. Number three shows a slimmer and taller tower to maximize the housing units while decreasing shadowing, and number four has increased the parking on-site. Staff feel that there has been a notable improvement in the form of development in the changes that the applicant team have undertaken during the revised submission. The following three slides will show the shadow analysis that was undertaken and compares the shadows as created by the buildings envisaged under the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan and those of the proposed building form. This slide shows the shadowing at the Equinox from 9:00 a.m. right through to 5:00 p.m., and it shows the building form identified under the Grandview Woodlands Plan compared to the proposed building form shadow. The next slide shows the shadowing at noon on the Equinox. As you can see, at noon, the properties directly to the north of the site are overshadowed substantially under the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan form. In contrast, the widened roof garden provides a notable relief from shadowing onto these properties, which is beneficial when considered the solar gain here. And the blue circle indicates the overlay. So, the red outline indicates the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan form fronting onto those properties to the north. Due to the mixed-use nature of the development, which will accommodate families within the social housing building over time and implement health and wellness programs on-site, the applicant did want to incorporate improved landscaping for all users of the building and the public in general. This will be achieved by the inclusion of the 110-feet-wide rooftop garden with children's play area. There is also a skylight that punctures into the floor space of the clinic below. This rooftop garden will be a private open space for the occupants of the social housing building. And number two on the slide shows an improved public relim experience along the length of the site on East First Avenue and fronting onto the quieter street of McLean Drive. The landscaping conditions are contained in Appendix B of the Council Report and will be further refined between staff and applicants as the proposal moves into the development permit stage. To conclude, staff have reviewed the application to rezon the site at 1636 Clark Drive and 1321 to 1395 East First Avenue, and conclude that the proposed land use, housing mix, former development, and public benefits are consistent with the directions outlined both in the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan and the Council's objectives to secure affordable housing across the city. The application, if approved, would deliver 90 social housing units, which would contribute to the achievement of the citywide social housing targets. Additionally, the provision of the Withdrawal Management Center, together with a social enterprise space, will address gaps identified in the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan around the provision of health and addiction services and community economic development opportunities. Overall, this development will be a significant step in addressing both the housing affordability and addiction challenges facing Vancouver at the moment. Before I conclude on the presentation, we received additional questions from Council regarding the application, and I will provide a response on some of the questions while our housing staff will complete the responses on the housing delivery questions. So, I'll just read out the first one. The first one was, "What is the clinical health services rationale for combining diverse services on-site?" And the second question was, "What are the pros and cons of locating these health services at some distance away from the downtown east side where many clients are located?" So, Council, just to let you know, we did consult with our colleagues in social policy, and we agreed that these questions would be best answered by the applicant team themselves, so I will give them an opportunity to do that after my presentation. There is another question here. Number three is, "Is there a way of designing the building so that the residents in the housing don't have windows onto Clark?" And I'll just provide a brief response on this one. So, many of our housing policy documents actually, you know, provide provision to deliver residential projects fronting onto arterial streets. So, we're trying to, obviously, the intent is to try and deliver this project in the most efficient, compact way, while adhering to the objectives of the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan. So, that's what we could say in that respect, but certainly we have our colleagues in urban design that can speak more to the form of development, should you have further questions on that. And I think, you know, there is maybe opportunity to further refine the floor plan as the applicant moves into the development permit process as well. So, that is me wrapped up. I will just pass it on to my colleagues at Housing Division to speak to the first two questions.
Hi, Alison Dunnett, Senior Planner, Affordable Housing. If we could just get the deck back up. Thank you. So, as Sarah has outlined, the project would create 90 social housing units, a net increase of 62 newly constructed homes on the site. And B.C. Housing's proposal demonstrates that approximately 50% of the social housing units can be rented to households which are at or below the B.C. housing income limits. The remaining units, approximately 50%, are intended to be rented at CMHC rental market rates for Vancouver. The table shown here shows you the different rent and affordability that is achievable between CMHC and Hills rents with senior government investment. At referral, staff were asked, "What is being done to make the rents in the social housing more affordable? 50% at Hills is better than 30%, but is there any commitment that people earning less than $41,000 will be able to live here?" Staff will continue to work with the applicant team from B.C. Housing to explore potential deeper affordability as the project progresses and development costs are more certain. The city and B.C. Housing are partners in the STEP program. STEP stands for Supporting Tenants Enabling Pathways, for residents who are ready to transition from supportive housing into social or market housing. These tenants are typically on social assistance and require subsidized rent or a rent supplement. Staff were interested to work with B.C. Housing to explore the possibility of STEP programs, both in this project and others, for the future. And I'll also note, B.C. Housing is here to speak and can speak in more detail to the project viability and affordability. I'd like to take a second of Council's time to talk about the tenant relocation plan. Slide up on the screen shows you the existing units on the site and the existing affordability of these city-owned rental units. There's eight one-bedrooms, five two-bedrooms, two duplexes, and three single-family homes, and it shows you the average monthly rent between approximately $850 and $1,700. One of the things the city has looked at is the tenant profile and the area affordability, the length of tenancy of the existing tenants on-site. You'll see there, we have seven households less than five years, two households five to 10 years, two households 10 to 20, and three households greater than 20 years on this site. years on this site. All tenancies are below CMHC area average rents. And we would note that the Grandview Woodland area has a vacancy rate of approximately zero point six percent as comparison to the citywide at zero point eight percent. In February twenty-eighteen, city staff and BC Housing invited tenants to meet to explain the proposed redevelopment project and answer any early questions or concerns they may have about the draft tenant relocation plan. Staff stressed the early timing of this meeting and that any future relocation would be subject to council decisions and RTA requirements for notice. Subsequently, a follow-up meeting occurred in June twenty-eighteen to explain the support that we provided, subject to rezoning, through a draft tenant relocation plan. At that time, residents were also offered additional one-to-one meetings to better understand their housing needs and to better explain the tenant relocation plan. Sarah has already covered for you the draft tenant relocation plan as it is today. I would just note a couple extra things included in the plan. You'll see a dedicated tenant relocation support staff in this plan, which is something being provided by the City of Vancouver. Unique to this project is, as the city is the landlord and BC Housing is a partner in this project, through the MOU, the city is leading the implementation of the TRP, but working closely with BC Housing and other partners. I would also note, the last bullet is a critical bullet to this slide. We note that there will be likely need additional supports, relocation supports for tenants with special circumstances, and given the low rents of existing tenants and the length of tenancy, we would expect as the plan progresses and we learn more about the tenants, that more would have to be identified to support them in relocation. So finally, staff were asked at referral, do the tenants know about the plan to relocate them and are they happy with it? And what is it? And I think we've covered what it is, and I think in, in noting the two meetings, we know that we've tried our best to let the tenants know about the plan. In September twenty-eighteen, we began to meet one-to-one with tenants to complete a needs assessment. To date, to thirteen of the sixteen occupied units have elected to meet with city staff, and the needs assessment is meant to help develop a robust tenant relocation plan that is tailored to the needs of the individual tenant. Staff recognize that some tenants may not want, may want to wait until the outcome of the rezoning to meet with staff, and we understand that. When residents, particularly long-term residents, face relocation from their home, it's rarely welcome and often difficult and upsetting. This is precisely why the city's TRP policy is in place, to mitigate those hardships and support rehousing. Staff and partners are striving to be transparent, fair, and supportive with all tenants on site, and working hard to ensure people are adequately rehoused should the rezoning proceed. Thank you.
Great. Is that it for the staff presentation? Great. Okay, so what I'd suggest to councillors, after you know, a few texts, is that we just have one round of questions for staff and the, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt. I think the applicant.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Presentations would take place now.
Thanks. Okay, so I can ask the applicant to come forward and speak the application?
Your worship, councillors, city staff, members of the public. My name is James Forsyth, and I'm the Director of Regional Development with BC Housing. I'd like to recognize that we're meeting tonight on the traditional territories of the Coast Salish people. The Clark and First Project is a partnership between the City of Vancouver, Vancouver Coastal Health, and BC Housing to address a series of issues and objectives set out by these partners. Each of these objectives are represented by different parts of the project. If you were to distill the product down to its core objectives, the product is a direct response to the housing and health crises that are being experienced in Vancouver. The product will include three major components: affordable rental housing, social and air price space, and a state-of-the-art withdrawal management centre. When selecting a site for a product of this scale, there were several key factors that had to be considered. The product needs to be located in close proximity to the existing detox centre, located just off of Great Northern Way. You can see that on the left of the, of the screen there. And it's important to note that the existing detox centre has been operating for over thirty years in a neighbourhood setting adjacent to housing, schools, and on a major arterial. Furthermore, the product requires a site with a substantial footprint. Based on the programming requirements, this product needs a large contiguous floor plate. The product would simply not work on a stacked floor plate on a smaller site. When searching for suitable candidate sites, this, this process was quite thorough, but unfortunately, there were very few sites that actually met this criteria. It's also important to note that the site also needs to be in close proximity to transit services, such as the VCC Skytrain Station just south of the site, community amenities and shops, such as Commercial Drive to the east of the site, and in proximity to downtown to the west. Almost a year ago, when we started the application process, the team made a commitment to engage with the community. We knew that there would be challenges. We pledged to work with our stakeholders. We pledged to listen to, to them and to take into consideration their feedback. We pledged to care about their feedback. We pledged to incorporate that feedback into our project. Throughout this application, we've held information sessions, canvassed door-to-door, held open houses, and we held many smaller engagement sessions with community groups. We made sure to create channels of communication that worked for stakeholders. So on the screen here, we have a map of just some of the stakeholders that we've actually engaged in. I do apologize because there's a, a list of another forty-some-odd groups that I just wasn't able to fit onto the map. I want to say thank you to everyone for their contributions to this project so far. And lastly, I want to emphasize that our engagement is not a one-time endeavor on this project. We see this product as, as an important part of the neighbourhood and the community, and the success of this product will depend on those ongoing relationships, ongoing engagement, and making sure that neighbours understand what's, what's going on in sight. We recognize that Vancouver is in a housing crisis that's putting many people across the spectrum of housing at risk. A good indicator of the health of the rental market is the vacancy rate. In Vancouver, we are currently seeing an average rate of less than one percent, which is incredibly low and considered unhealthy. However, within Grandview Woodlands, that rate is even lower than that. I want to point out that while it's important to create new housing stock to address that vacancy rate, you also need to provide affordable housing stock. Typically, we expect people to pay around thirty percent of their income towards housing. Currently, forty-six percent of renters within Vancouver are paying more than thirty percent. And in fact, twenty-five percent of renters are actually paying more than half of their income towards housing. The housing component of this product will help to address these crises by creating safe, stable, secure, and affordable housing for seniors, individuals, persons with disabilities, and families. Through grant funding from the Affordable Rental Housing Programme provided by the provincial government, this product will provide low-to-moderate-income households with housing. The housing will be secured as affordable housing for the entire life of the building and will be operated by a nonprofit housing society in partnership with BC Housing. When looking at the spectrum of housing, this product aligns with the City of Vancouver's ten-year housing targets and provincial service plans. Presently, we are targeting for at least half of the housing to be rented at or below Hills rates. The remainder of the units will be rented at rates below the low-to-moderate-income levels. One hundred percent of this building will be below market rates and affordable housing. And we hope to achieve deeper levels of affordability as we move through the development process. As Gradview Woodlands' plan is, is implemented, other housing tenures, such as market and rental housing, are anticipated in this area. We see this proposal as part of an evolving social mix within the community. This product also includes a social enterprise component. This is an incredibly important space that will focus on indigenous employment and support the tenants of fostering access and inclusion within the City of Reconciliation. I would now like to hand it over to Bonnie Wilson from Vancouver Coastal Health.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. My name is Bonnie Wilson. I'm a Director for Vancouver Coastal Health with our Community Services. I thought I'd start off by giving you a sense of the clients that we currently support at our Withdrawal Management Services in Vancouver. Overall, we serve a very diverse group of people from a broad spectrum within our community. We see clients who are running their own businesses and clients who have lost their businesses due to problematic substance use. We support clients with active and involved families and clients who've lost contact with their families but are working on rebuilding those relationships. Some of our clients are coming to us for the first time as they start to experience the negative impacts of their substance use. And some clients have been with us more than once as they experience relapses during their recovery journey. Finally, we have clients who come to us for help to stop problematic alcohol use completely. But we also have clients who want to safely transition to Suboxone as a substitute for the tainted opioids they've been using on the streets. Our existing main Withdrawal Management Site is the Vancouver Detox Centre located on West Second. We've been working out of this facility, as you've heard, for over thirty years, but it wasn't purpose-built for our use. The small size and overall layout severely limit our ability to provide optimal care. An example of this is depicted in the photo above. The majority of our client rooms are shared, with people being in close proximity to each other. Because of our space constraints, we're unable to offer the kind of privacy that people would expect when, when receiving a very personal and at times uncomfortable medical intervention. In fact, some individuals who come to us for the first time tell us how disconcerted they are by the surroundings, and some even express a desire to leave before starting the program. Fortunately, we have a strong compassionate team that work diligently to overcome the physical constraints and to win over the doubtful newcomers. Finding a new space that is welcoming and allows us to offer care in a dignified and respectful manner has been a goal of VCHs for a very long time. All of the program planning and design will be based on the principles outlined on the left-hand of this slide. And specifically, the service that we're, services that'll be included, you've heard some of the, some of this in the, in the city's presentation, but we have some additions just to, just to round things out. So we'll be having an access and intake team, an inpatient and outpatient withdrawal management, sobering centre, transitional housing, and an academic hub. It's important to note that the services outlined in the top three bullets are already provided out of Vancouver Detox, Harbour Light Detox, and the Robert and Lily Lee Community Health Centre. This project gives us the opportunity to bring together services that VCH and the Salvation Army have been successfully operating for decades. A specific question has been raised about the clinical rationale for combining diverse services on the site. First, we want to clarify that we feel these services are not as diverse as they may seem. They are all focusing on early substance use treatment and stabilization. And second, bringing these services together helps us create a system of care and a continuum of services that are easy to navigate and seamless to transition through. This is a critically important point, as we know that it's in these transitions between services that clients are most susceptible to being lost to care and falling through the cracks. Given how challenging it is for people to address their problematic substance use, we need to minimize transitions, smooth out the pathway as much as possible, and offer them the support they need to continue on this precarious journey. This project offers us the opportunity to do so. This is a complicated slide, but I want to walk you through a couple of client scenarios about what a journey would look like for individuals accessing our services. So the first scenario is a woman in her late thirties, and she has a good relationship with her GP. So in the blue circle to the left, those are the community services that we're talking about, so that would be the primary care service. She wants to address her increasingly problematic alcohol use, and her GP feels that she's done everything that she can at this point within the realm of her expertise and that they need to consult some specialty services. This is very similar to what a GP would do with referring someone with heart trouble to a cardiologist. So they make the referral together to our access and intake team, who do a screen and gather additional information. They note that the woman has a child at home and a very supportive family. She's tried in the past to reduce her alcohol use, but has been unsuccessful. Together, they decide that an inpatient stay is appropriate, and a date is determined, and she arranges appropriate childcare. She starts the program and successfully engages with the services, but three days in, her childcare falls through and she has to return home. Fortunately, she has not experienced any medical complications, and her care can be safely done on an outpatient basis. The team at the site works with her to continue with the plan, the program, and the ongoing support. She's even able to come back to the centre while her child is at school to participate in some group programming. Once she's successfully stabilized, she's ready to carry on with her long-term recovery through groups offered closer to her home. The second scenario is a male in his forties with a twenty-year history of problematic substance use. He uses a variety of substances, but has recently been using opioids more and continues to consume alcohol. He lives with a partner who also has problematic substance use, and their housing situation is tenuous. He's been using an overdose prevention site and has expressed to peers working there that he wants to get help to engage in further recovery. They call the assessment team and are able to book an appointment in person that afternoon. The physician and the nurse talk about various options and together determine that due to his situation at home and some additional health issues, it would be best for him to come as an inpatient and start on Suboxone and then also begin to look at his alcohol use. During his stay, he successfully transitions to Suboxone and indicates that he wants to engage in a longer-term treatment program for his alcohol use. But there's a three-week wait to get into the treatment program. So rather than going home to an unstable and potentially triggering environment, he stays in the transitional housing until he's able to move to the treatment program. The team is able to continue to support him and transition him to the treatment facility successfully. These two scenarios highlight two important components of the overall system of care, as well as the benefits of co-locating the service. Number one, the clients are able to access much of their healthcare services in their own neighbourhoods and communities, but were able to access the specialized services that they needed in the new centre. Second, the clients were able to transition to different levels of care of support offered through the centre without breaking their attachment to care. So you have seen a slide already about our existing Withdrawal Management Centre, and at this time, I'd like to point out how our plan with the new centre will, will work towards integrating with the neighbourhood and how we envision the linkages between healthcare and housing. As you can see on the map above, the existing Vancouver Detox Centre on East Second is located in a residential area surrounded by apartment buildings, across from a school, the new Emily Carr campus, and various businesses. It's also important to note that our sobering centre is currently located within this site as well. We've successfully provided inpatient withdrawal management, some outpatient group support and sobering at this site and in this community for decades, without negative disruption or negative interactions with our neighbours. The proposed location is only two kilometres away and offers some of the same geographic benefits, while also giving us much-needed expanded footprint. Some of the benefits that we see are continued location within a residential neighbourhood to minimize stigma, close proximity to our existing site, access to transit routes, and close proximity to the downtown core without being located in the downtown core itself. In response to the query about the pros and cons of having services located outside of the downtown east side, for people who live outside of the downtown east side, coming to the downtown east side for treatment can be a challenge and a detriment for them to access services. For those who live in the downtown east side, some are actually looking for services outside of their neighbourhood to give them some time and space away from the daily triggers associated with their substance use. The location for the new site is close enough to the downtown core so that distance is not a barrier, but far enough away to create some separation. At the same time, we do appreciate that services will continue to need to be offered in the downtown east side, and so we, we will engage in all efforts to ensure that services are readily available in a manner that's accessible for those who need it. As you've heard, the City of Vancouver is facing some fairly unprecedented social challenges at this time, nothing new to anyone here. The devastating impacts of problematic substance use and housing availability and affordability. Vancouver Coastal Health is acutely aware of the health impacts of both of these issues and sees the need to be a part of the solution on both fronts. When opportunities come up to address both of these issues in one location, we feel that it's our responsibility to explore all possibilities. For example, when temporary modular housing was first introduced in BC, VCH supported the first site to be built on the lands of our George Pearson Centre, which is a residential care facility predominantly for adults with disabilities. This is the Ryderman Residence in the Marpole area pictured in the middle of this slide. As some may recall, there was considerable opposition for that community for this project. But there was an article in the paper today indicating that there have been virtually no negative incidents with this site, with this community, nor have there been complaints. And our very vulnerable, potentially vulnerable residents of George Pearson Centre welcomed this site with open arms, recognizing the need to increase housing in our community for all. for all. We're also looking forward and planning for all of our new community health centres and looking for opportunities to include housing as a part of all of these sites. On the left-hand side of the slide, the Pearson-Dogwood redevelopment as a whole is incorporating significant amounts of housing with a developer, including housing for people with disabilities as well as affordable and social housing. We're also looking at options for 301 East Hastings and 58 West Hastings, and again, we're partnering with groups to pair our community health centres with housing. We see health services and housing as naturally coexisting in our communities. Finally, we want to reiterate that we are committed to being good neighbours and being good stewards of this site, just as we've been good neighbours within the community for over 30 years. The site will be staffed 24/7 to address the needs of the clients and to respond to any potential issues and concerns. Our building design and planning takes safety and security into consideration, and our pick-up and drop-off areas are designated to minimise traffic disruption. Our client needs are all met on-site, without the need for people to come and go at all hours of the day. We feel confident that we can build on our proven track record for successfully operating similar sites and services over the years and bring all of that knowledge and learning to this new centre. On behalf of the project team, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present on this exciting project.
Thanks very much. So is that it from the applicant team, or are there more presenters? That's it? Okay, great. So, thanks. So, thank you very much for the presentation. So what I'm proposing is that we have a round of questions from councillors, at least like to try to keep these questions as short as possible so we can get to the public presentations, as well as if staff or the applicant are answering questions, if you keep your answers brief as well, so we can get right to the... I just have two councillors on the list, so it shouldn't take too long. Councillor Dejanova, please go ahead up to five minutes.
With questions? Are we debating whether or not we're having questions?
Oh, yeah, for questions. We just have two...
I'd like to move that we do have questions. Murray, 10 seconds. So I'll just move forward with questions, Mr Mayor. Thank you. First of all, to our city staff, I did notice on page 13 of the policy report that it's noted in the tenant relocation plan that rents are actually 705 to 2,500 per month, but in the presentation it was noted that rents currently for tenants are 850 to 2,500. So I was hoping that you might be able to provide some feedback, if not now, later, as to which is correct, the presentation or the report. Moving on to another question regarding tenant relocation, and this may be a question more so for BC Housing, for the applicant. It would be regarding tenants who qualified for social housing, who perhaps live right now in, or would face, would be a part of the tenant relocation. If they qualified, could they move back, not only at the rates before, but if they qualified for the social housing, would they be able to move into the social housing on-site?
To the first question around the rents, I believe that's just rounding is why you're seeing the higher, the 817 that's in the...
705 here, it's 850 there.
Yeah, it's in the, and there might be a typo error.
Okay.
I think Appendix F has the very specific rents.
Okay.
Page one of 40.
All right.
In the document, they're rounded up from 817 to 850.
It was page 13 of the policy report that I'm looking at. I can have that answer later. I'm more concerned about the if tenants did qualify for social housing, when the, or for housing, I suppose, at the, at different, I'm considering the rates because I'm looking at the hills rates here, but I'm also looking at if they were, if they qualified for welfare pension rate housing, would they be able to move into the units that would be on-site at those rates?
I think we would work with the applicant. Right now, what you have in the proposal from BC Housing is the average rents, the average hills rents. We work to generate a range of rents underneath that, so that is something we could work with the applicant on. If there was a need for a shelter rate unit at this time, as I mentioned in the presentation, we don't have that in this project, but that is something we're working towards, is the ability to assist tenants that way.
Okay. I see the applicant behind you as well, so, and as...
Alison did a really, actually, very good job to explain that. And yeah, at this point in time, we're outlining kind of the high-level rents, and then as we move through the process, then we would be reaching out to all of the tenants who were relocated, that we're going to have them on the BC Housing Registry, and then work with them to see if it is a good fit for them to move back into that building, or if there are additional needs that need to be addressed at that time.
So their rents, in fact, could be lower if, could possibly be lower if that's what they qualified for. So that was interesting to me.
Potentially, depending on their housing needs at that time.
Thank you. And a nonprofit partner, that would go out to RFP later?
The nonprofit partner, we've actually, we've gone out for the RFP. It has closed, and we're in the process of selecting the successful proponent.
Okay, thank you very much. And the other question, I'm not sure if this may be a question for Vancouver Coastal Health, I'm trying to get them all in there. I understand that from the presentation that there would be more individualised treatment plans for people who currently your 20-bed facility wouldn't be able to provide that too, so I'm hoping you could answer that. And at the same time, the facility right now, it sounds like it's in disrepair from what I've read and what I've seen, is there a risk that that location may not be able to operate for very much longer? And if there isn't a place for new beds or other beds, that that would be a concern?
Just 20 seconds, thanks.
Okay. So, doing individualised planning, that is our goal with every individual, and we just want to articulate that we aren't simply doing withdrawal management or quote-unquote detox anymore, we are also stabilising people on opioid agonist therapy. So that's the individualisation of the work. And then with our current facility, we are working diligently to keep the doors open and the toilets working and the infrastructure in place. And we're feeling as though it'll live another day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. On to councillor Swanson, please. Five minutes for questions and answers, and just reminder to keep things short and on the topic of this...
Yeah, I have more questions about the rents. So the existing tenants, is there any plan to make sure while the place is being built that they aren't going to be paying more than they are now? Can the city and BC Housing and everybody work together to ensure they have some security so they're not paying a lot higher rent in the interim?
In the tenant relocation plan, the intention is to find tenants' housing to move into, if the rezoning is successful, from that unit into something that is affordable to them. The right of first refusal is a kind of downstream opportunity we keep open with the nonprofit in BC Housing, for those who qualify for social housing to come back into that building. So we will be looking for each tenant to ensure that we have an affordable option for them to move into.
And I'm talking about what happens between when they're demovicted and when they move in?
If they choose to come back in, if they're eligible to come back in.
Is the city going to guarantee that they, or is the city in BC Housing, that they will have housing that isn't more than they are paying now?
No, it's not about what they're paying now, it's about them having an option that is affordable to them and manageable. So in the tenant relocation plan, we're very specific about tenants who have low incomes and cannot afford rent, to find opportunities for them to rent at 30% of household income. So we'll be looking for an affordable option. There are to be provided three options at CMHC average rents, so that's for folks who, I guess I would say, are not low income, we would be working to find them average CMHC rent in the neighbourhood.
And isn't there in the TRP something about 10%?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question. That question's come up a few times from folks, about the 10% below, and that is a condition in our tenant relocation policy for tenants with special circumstances, like being very low income. So it's not something that is done for all tenants across a project, it is for tenants who are low income.
Okay, another concern I have is about the definition of social housing and how, in the staff report, you said 50% at hills, 50% at market, and the BC Housing guy, Mr Forsyth, said 100% would be below market. And I'm just, you know, I've been looking at these figures, 41,000 for hills, that's $20 an hour, 30% of the people in Vancouver don't make that much, and they're the ones that need housing the most. And you keep saying, oh, we're trying to make it more affordable, you're trying to make it more affordable, but what are the chances that you actually will make it more affordable? I mean, especially with this budget that just came down.
So we're just focusing on this project specifically, councillor Swanson?
So the question is, what are the chances that you really will make it more affordable? Totally legitimate question.
It is totally legitimate.
Yeah, and I think in the council report, both in the presentation and the policy report, we've tried to be very clear that the city is working hard with BC Housing as the project progresses to deepen that affordability. So what you see today as proposed average rents is a starting place, and staff are looking to work with BC Housing. As the project economics get clearer, that we can drive greater affordability into the project. It would also depend on some of our other conversations that we're having with stakeholders around supportive housing units and investment in terms of creating more shelter rate units, which is a priority for this council and something that the Affordable Housing Team is working hard to advance, not just on this site, but on projects across the city.
So here's one that's unusual for me. What about the Clark Drive air and all those poor tenants that are going to have to be breathing that? Is there some design thing you can do to mitigate that?
I will turn that over to the team from Planning to answer.
I'm Pat Chan from Urban Design. So about sort of the units facing Clark Drive, you've asked whether like, could they not have windows facing Clark? One strategy to significantly increase the residential floors on that tower setback away from Clark could be considered, however that's impact about moving them, greater setback. Primarily, it will sort of have impact on achievable floor area and thus the dwelling unit counts. This may also result in pushing the tower further eastward, and thus reducing the Sky Gardens 110 feet width. It should also be noted that through the pre-application process, staff actually did request a greater setback for that tower off Clark.
I'm just going to have to stop you there, we are at our five minutes, so we're trying to keep it strictly to five, so thanks very much, and perhaps somebody will let you ask a similar question. Thank you very much. Councillor Kirby Young, please.
Sure, I have a point of information first for clarification, Mr Mayor, if I can, before I begin. Are we now doing our normal round of questions and then having a separate round tomorrow? Is this it, and council's chance to ask questions? Because I thought you had suggested earlier that we wave questions in front of speakers, I just want to be clear on what...
Yep, it was requested from a couple of councillors that we do have an initial round, a quick round of questions, and then we will go right to the public presenters to hear from them, and then we'd have a chance for further questions later after we hear from all the public, so we're trying to get through this one pretty quickly.
We should stick to the most important ones now then, and we will have another opportunity.
That's right, but everybody does have up to five minutes, all councillors do in this section, so I'll start your timer, there you go.
Thank you for the clarification. I'll try to go through these quickly. So my first one relates to congruence with the Grandview Woodlands Plan and Section 7.13 rezoning, and I noticed that staff said that they were asking council for, to waive the pace of change policy based on the fact that it wasn't intended to prohibit or impede, I believe was the statement, 100% social projects. Can you advise me how this is 100% social project, 150% is going to be at average market rental rates? I'm trying to understand that and get some more clarity, please.
So if I, Alison Dunn, Affordable Housing, if I understand the question, it is, you're interested to understand the social housing definition and this proposal...
No, I'm not. It was really very specific to the statement in the slide that said, and it was in a box, it said, "Staff are asking council to waive the pace of change policy," as indicated in the Grandview Woodlands Plan, stating that this was 100% social project, but my understanding of it's going to be 50% at average market rates at CMHC, that doesn't seem to be 100% social, so I'm just trying to reconcile those two statements.
There was a slide earlier in the presentation showing the bylaw definition of social housing, the city's definition of a 100% social housing project. A 100% social housing project must have a minimum of 30% of the units renting at or below hills. That's our bylaw definition of a social housing project, as say, different than a market rental project. That's how you qualify to come in as a 100% social housing project. The mix of rents within that project then would vary depending on the project economics, the partners involved, the funding involved. In this project, BC Housing has been able to achieve 50% of the units at hills, and the remaining 50% are going to be at CMHC. It is a quote-unquote 100% social housing.
Okay, thank you. I ask that by way of clarification, it may help some of the folks tonight, because I think that there's general misperception or misunderstanding of how the city defines 100% social project versus the Grandview Woodlands Plan. My second question relates to industrial land use, particularly because I'm now on the Metro Industrial Lands Task Force, and also I think it was said that 22% of the site, which is currently not utilised, but is zoned for industrial, would be rezoned, and that the city, and I think you said, can covert a small percentage. Is 22% considered small when we have such pressure on our industrial land?
I can take that question. It's Yardley McNeil with the rezoning centre. The regional context statement allows the city to make very small adjustments to the industrial land base within Vancouver. It's not 22%. I think you may be confused around, the answer earlier was that the I2 portion of the site represents 22% of the overall site area.
Of the site, yes.
The RCA adjustment would be significantly smaller than that. I think, we don't have the number with us, but we're talking about very, very small adjustments to the industrial land base, and we can bring that response or that information back to you at a later time if needed.
And staff don't have concerns because we're rapidly losing our industrial land in the city?
That's why the Metro Vancouver allows the city to make these very small adjustments, to move it from industrial into general urban, which allows a variety of uses, and they have predetermined what that percentage is, and it's, as I said, it's highly discretionary and incredibly small, and we're within the scope of those provisions that MetroCore have laid out for us.
Okay, I'm going to move on because I've got a minute and a half, and I want to get through a couple of these. There's been also some questions from the community around historical evidence of projects where, that combine affordable rental housing, detox, other facilities. Do we not have that because this is a first? Is it fair to say that this is a first of its type in the city of Vancouver? So therefore, it would not be possible to provide historical comparisons or precedents of this type of, this variety of mixed uses?
I would say this specific use, it is the first, but we do have examples of combining healthcare services and housing.
Okay, but housing that includes, would the new component to this be the amount of rental at market compared to other mixed facilities or scenarios in the past?
I think that there are projects which do include a variety of housing and our care. I think what my understanding is, is the issues are specifically around having a withdrawal management centre conjoined with housing, that would be a unique feature.
Okay.
Thanks so much, just...
Thank you. I have 10 seconds, I'll ask a really quick one. Can you tell me, total, or you can send this back to me after, total number of beds with the reduced other two facilities and consolidation here, if we have a net increase in beds or reduction, that's another question that's come up. Thank you.
Thank you. On to councillor Weave, up to five minutes for questions and answers about this specific project. Thank you.
Perfect. First question is, in the report it talks about approximately half will be hills, or can be 50%. Is it a reason why it's not at least 50%, which we see in a lot of the other proposals that come forward, and the language?
Alison Dunn, Affordable Housing.
Yep.
The project as it is right now at rezoning is proposing the 50%-50% split. We are not at the place where we finalise the amounts.
Okay.
So there is still flexibility to work to ideally deepen the affordability on the proposal.
But there's also an opportunity to go the other direction as well? Or is there a commitment that it'll be at least 50%?
Sorry, I'm just trying to pull up the condition for you, and staff could also follow up with the exact wording on that.
Okay, and the second question while you're waiting, the architectural model in front of us, the architectural model in front of us, the glass buildings around, they don't meet the current zoning, so I'm wondering why those heights were chosen?
Hi there, Andrew Pasque, planner for the Grandview Woodland community...
Hi there, Andrew Paske, planner for the Grandview Woodland Community Plan. What the plan shows is the hypothetical build-out under the rezoning policies that are contained in the plan, and also in the case of the I-2 area along Clark there and the, I guess, to your left in the model.
So I-2, I-2, what is the current zoning height maximum?
A conditional 100 feet.
And is that 100 feet on that model?
I believe so, yes, yes.
But is the building that we're talking about not 120 feet?
Do you want to take that?
Just in relation to the permitted building heights, the maximum building height in this case for this project is 36.6 meters, which is 120 feet.
Okay, and the zoning for I-2 is 100?
That's correct.
So it's just looking at the model, it's actually higher than the building, and I used to work for an architectural model company, so it just makes it seem like it is actually smaller than the zoning around it, which if, as a public, it's distorted when it's trying to persuade.
Okay, the model that you see before you was the initial submission that was submitted in May, and since then, we have a revised rezoning application that was submitted in August. What happened through the architectural revisions, the height on Clark Drive that you see right in front of you is actually increased to allow more housing units condensed on Clark Drive while allowing a widened rooftop podium. So there was, there was comments we received about the shadowing to the properties to the north. This is to reduce the shadowing onto the north and to allow more amenity space on site.
So the one that we're voting on is actually 20% higher?
The model that you see in front of you.
It's the one in front of me.
So this is the initial submission that was submitted in May.
Okay, and the updated one is this? No?
No, this is the original model.
So the model that we are voting on would have been substantially higher?
It's a little bit higher to account for another floor of residential units, yes.
Okay, and do we not normally do revised models for public hearings?
We usually don't, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. On to councillor Carr for five minutes, questions and answers on this specific project.
Thanks so much, Mayor Stewart. Thanks for answering many of my questions that I gave at the time of referral, but I have some more that have arisen out of correspondence primarily, so I'll do some to staff and then others to the applicant if I have time to get to them. We noticed that there's more parking and that additional parking space. I'm wondering if it meets the needs of staff. There were some staff issues around, amount of, proposed staff issues around amount of parking. Does it meet those needs?
Thanks for the question. John Turecki with Transportation. So there's been quite a bit of back and forth with the applicant's team on the amount of parking provided on the site. The original application, as you're aware, had only about 34 spaces, and that's been increased to about 81 currently. There's been a couple of different parking studies that have been completed, looking at existing facilities from BC Housing, as well as existing coastal health facilities. Based on the time-of-day analysis that was conducted, the peak parking demand is expected to be about 105 vehicles. So we have conditions in this rezoning that would seek to either increase the amount of parking provided on the site or provide transportation demand management measures that would help to reduce the demands on site. And that's something that we'll be looking to work with the applicant on through the development permit process.
That's good to know, thank you. My other questions are around the community plan. I'm wondering if there's any room in the community plan to convert industrial lands? Like, where is the language in the plan? Is it strict saying, "Don't convert industrial land," or where's the room to move on that?
The plan does not include the I-2 section along Clark Drive, so it's included in this project because we're dealing with a high priority sense of uses. We have the regional context statement, permission to make very small adjustments to the industrial land base, and you have before you a combination of a project that is partly in the Grandview Woodlands Plan and partly within the I-2 zoning.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you. In terms of the setbacks, there was concern raised by some residents in letters to us that the setbacks had been reduced, and now in the revised proposal, they have been increased. Do the increases reflect the intent of the plan in terms of maintaining setbacks?
Just to clarify, are you, just to clarify the question, are you talking about the setbacks off of Clark Drive?
Yes.
The setbacks along Clark Drive, especially for the top half of the building where it's residential, the white part, it's set back around 3.7 meters from the property line. So as compared to that version, that model you see there, which is more or less flush, so to answer councillor Swanson's question also, it's set back a little bit more from Clark Drive to, so that the units over Clark, they don't kind of loom right over, but has a bit of a reprieve.
Okay, I understand now that Clark Drive anyway isn't in the plan, so the setbacks are a different issue, but thanks for the information on that. I also noticed that in the presentation, it was, it looked like the future build-out along Clark Drive was at 10 stories, so it matched the height of this, is that correct?
Hi there. Yeah, that future build-out speaks to what you can do under the zoning as it currently exists, so the conditional allowance under the I-2 zoning enables you to get up to 100 feet with the approval of the director of planning.
That's 10 stories. Great, thank you. Some questions to the applicant, I only have a minute left, but I'm wondering the rationale for locating this outside the downtown east side, and if you can give me a picture of how many of the clients would be from the downtown east side versus other parts of the city?
The, I spoke in the presentation about the pros and cons of having services outside of the downtown east side, so we do feel that there is benefit, that we do have clients both from outside of the downtown east side and in the downtown east side who do want to seek service in a different community, just so that they're a bit removed from those social triggers. I don't have the numbers, the specific numbers with me tonight about the proportion.
It'd be nice to kind of get a sense of that. You also spoke to the layout, that why you need a larger floor plate, the small-size layout. What do you mean about the layout?
In just five seconds, so perhaps we could have a written.
Yes, 10 or 14.
The current layout in terms of the flow and the space that we have for client rooms is really inadequate.
That's a pretty good answer. Thanks for this. Okay, in five seconds. Thanks, councillor Dominado, please, up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My questions are for Vancouver Coastal Health, so sorry to make you up and down. Couple of questions. One with respect to, are you considering any kind of not-for-profit operator or service operator within, so I know that BC Housing's looking at a housing operator, is Vancouver Coastal Health considering any kind of additional operator to provide the services within the centre there?
No, not at this time.
Okay, is that something that might be contemplated in the future?
It's not a part of our planning.
Okay. Second question is, with respect to the services themselves and the withdrawal management services, could you just sort of elaborate on how the assessments will be undertaken as well as what the process will look like specifically around referrals? And so I know, I know you have the client pathway there, but I'm thinking about, so that next step, referral to potentially other agencies, other services, housing, even potentially outside of Vancouver, because there may be individuals who are seeking recovery or abstinence and, and they want to go to Prince George or maybe they have family there. What does that look like? Sort of the assessment piece and then the referral aspect.
Sure, yeah. We, many of the treatment, the residential treatment programs and a lot of the recovery houses are actually outside of Vancouver. And so our teams currently do work with individuals to make those referrals to those other services and then work with the plans in terms of transitioning them to those services. So an assessment would be, would be very individual. What does the individual want? What are their goals? What's the best opportunity for them? Can they receive those services on an outpatient basis by going to groups in their community? Or do they need to go to a residential, more of a residential program? And so our teams do that work with the individuals to help them make that transition and refer to those services.
Okay, oh, one more question, sorry. Almost forgot. Just with the move with St. Paul's Hospital, what does that relationship look like? Is there a relationship, do you envision that, given the proximity of the hospital to the proposed services here?
Yeah, we currently have a very good relationship with St. Paul's Hospital, and so that working relationship would continue. We do get clients who have gone to St. Paul's Hospital, and they're either at the emergency room or on an inpatient unit, who are then needing to come into withdrawal management, so we'll carry on with that pathway as well.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. So that's it for questions from council. Now we'll move to hearing from the public. Just, let's wait for them to finish and then, yeah. If you didn't throw things on people, that would be great. You know, we, thanks for voicing that. So again, throwing stuff on people below is not too cool. You know, we've made your point, thank you very much. Thank you. Just wait for a second, council. And apologies to the folks below if stuff hit them. Okay, then, so we're going to move on to the public bodies or presentations. They have three presenters, Dr. Patty Daly, Dr. Ronald Joe, and Dr. Kevin Barlow, and up to five minutes. Thanks very much. Please go ahead.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm Dr. Patty Daly. I'm your chief medical health officer here in Vancouver, and I'm here to speak in favor of the project, including the withdrawal management center that will be operated by Vancouver Coastal Health because of its importance in helping us address the opioid overdose crisis. And I'm reminded that the last time I was in this chamber was on December 20th, when council unanimously supported the recommendations of the mayor's overdose emergency task force. So first, I want to thank you for that. Now, at that time, we did not have the final overdose death numbers from 2018, which have recently been released by the coroner, so I just want to update council that last year there were 1,489 people who died from overdose in BC. That compares to 1,487 in 2017, so nearly the same number, and the total may go up as additional deaths are still being investigated. For Vancouver, there were 382 deaths last year compared to 376 in 2017, and while the death rate is highest in the downtown east side, deaths have occurred all over Vancouver. The rate of death in Vancouver remains the highest in BC, nearly twice the provincial average, and that's not because we're not responding to the crisis, we have prevented deaths. It's because there are more people, more citizens in Vancouver with opioid use disorder than anywhere else in BC. As a reminder to council, opioid use disorder is a chronic relapsing health condition. It is not a moral failing or a lifestyle choice. However, the healthcare system has not historically done a particularly good job in providing care for people with opioid use disorder, in part because our understanding of this chronic health condition is relatively recent. But we now know that relapse is expected among people with opioid use disorder. We also know that traditional detox and abstinence-based recovery, which wean people off illegal drugs, can actually increase the risk of death because people lose their tolerance to opioids and are more likely to overdose when they relapse. And in fact, experts at the BC Centre on Substance Use have recommended against detox and recovery programs unless they are accompanied by a strategy to ensure that those with opioid use disorder are offered and retained on opioid agonist therapy, such as Suboxone or Methadone, which we know protects against death. In Vancouver Coastal Health, we have reviewed our own overdose deaths in this crisis, and we have found that historically, we have not done a very good job in retaining people with opioid use disorder on this life-saving treatment. Because of what we have learned in the crisis, Vancouver Coastal Health is redesigning our addiction treatment services, and the new withdrawal management center planned at Clark and First will be part of that redesign. As Bonnie Wilson described to you, this will not be an abstinence-based detox facility, but instead will be an important component of a more integrated system of care that will support people with opioid use disorder to start on and be retained on long-term opioid agonist therapy and support improved care for those with other substance use disorders, including alcohol. And many people with alcohol use disorder are also dying of opioid overdose in this crisis. Now, you may ask, given the timelines for the new center, whether it will help address the current overdose crisis. While we certainly will be working, continuing to work to reduce overdose deaths before it is built, the reality is that the crisis, which is now in its third year, will not be over anytime soon, and the work needed to build a system of care for addictions, including this new facility, will be important not just in the current crisis, but to prevent deaths in the future. Finally, I would like to remind council of the priorities you supported in the mayor's overdose emergency task force report. They included expanded treatment for addiction, but also, and I quote, "to provide harm reduction treatment and supports across Vancouver neighborhoods." If Vancouver Coastal Health was planning a new community health center or primary care clinic at Clark and First, this would likely be embraced by the local community. Unfortunately, there is still considerable stigma associated with substance use disorder, and I might add, for mental illness as well. When healthcare services are planned for people with these types of chronic health conditions, there may not be the same level of community support, and in some cases, in some communities, not just in Vancouver but elsewhere in the province, there may be opposition. Unfortunately, that kind of stigma may actually contribute to an increased risk of death because it can prevent people from getting the care that they need. Mayor and council, your support for the planned withdrawal management center at Clark and First will help to reduce the stigma associated with substance use disorder, which affects so many of our fellow citizens across Vancouver and is contributing to the high rate of overdose deaths. Thank you for your continued support for the work that we do.
Thank you very much. Councillor De Genova, I have you on the list? Yep, okay, up to five minutes, please.
Thank you. I'm just going to reset the timer. Thank you very much, Dr. Daly, for your presentation. I'm curious if you might be able to, of course, you don't have to answer any of my questions, but I'm hoping you might be able to, to help in, in an answer that I'm receiving in correspondence, and that is regarding a number of, a number of people who live in Vancouver, or say they live in Vancouver, are concerned that increasing the number of beds for detox or having a withdrawal management program here in the city of Vancouver will, in fact, draw more people to Vancouver. Is there a regional strategy and approach to that? Are other municipalities looking at this as well so that it's not just build it and they will come, as is stated in some of the correspondence we've received?
The investments we're making to improve our system of addiction care come from funding from the provincial government and the federal government, and other health authorities have received those same investments and have the same deliverables to improve the system of addiction treatment, so these services will be expanding across the province.
Okay, so that, that's very helpful for me to be able to respond to people after the conclusion of the public hearing to, to state that Vancouver Coastal Health is indeed working with other health authorities across the region.
It's a provincial approach.
Yes, exactly. So I just wanted to clarify that, even though we're here specifically talking about this project, the regional approach won't necessarily mean that we're receiving people who otherwise wouldn't be using the current detox or on the waitlist for that.
I would say there's plenty of need within the city of Vancouver for these services.
Okay, that was my next question, so thank you very much. Also, the individualized treatment plans, I'll ask you the same question I asked earlier, which is, how important is that to individuals? I suppose their, their recovery or the chances of them going into recovery, because I understand recovery is a process. You don't just magically reach recovery. There can be a different, a different amount of need in times, and I certainly understand that. I'm wondering if you can comment on how this will set people up for success in a way that we, we currently can't achieve.
Well, we're working on this right now. We do know that, that there needs to be a variety of treatment options to be tailored to the individual. Historically, we really only had one drug for opioid use disorder, Methadone, and there was also a belief by many that, that abstinence was the preferred approach to recovery. We now know that puts people at increased risk of death, and we need to tailor treatment approaches to reduce that risk. We have many other treatment options available, and we are training physicians and nurse practitioners to be able to assess clients and provide the individual treatment approach. But we also know that people may need to try a variety of different options before they find what will work for them. Our goal is to, to ensure that they, we reduce the risk of overdose and death, and there's going to be many paths to get to that.
Thank you. To councillor Dominado's question that was asked earlier, and perhaps she was going to ask you, but I'm very interested in this. Vancouver Coastal Health will be moving forward in the management and operations of this program, not with a nonprofit partner such as BC Housing is choosing to do on the housing side. I'm. Does Vancouver Coastal Health ever work with nonprofit partners specifically for detox?
I'm going to give that to Bonnie, who's been.
Thank you very much.
Yes, one of our current withdrawal management facilities is operated by Salvation Army, and another one is actually a partnership with Portland Hotel Society.
Okay, and, and could you comment on the reason that Vancouver Coastal Health has chosen, chosen to manage this?
Well, we're bringing together the services, that the majority of the services we currently operate, and the services that we operate are more of the medically intense withdrawal management services, and so what we'd be doing is we'd bring, be bringing in the services that are less medically complex, and then in order to provide the continuum of services in one place, on one floor, with one team, it really makes sense to actually just have one provider.
Just very, very quickly, and as a yes or no question, in the future, would, could there possibly be consideration for nonprofits to be involved?
We have no plan to consider that at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much, on to councillor Carr, please, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mayor Stewart, Dr. Daly. My first question has to do with the clinical health service rationale for combining these services on site, so making a larger complex, what is that rationale?
Well, I think Bonnie described this well, what we've realized with people with substance use disorders, we need to have a continuum of care and a variety of services available. In fact, we've had some clinics that offer very specific types of, for example, opioid agonist therapy, our, we, our goal in future will be to have a much wider variety of options available wherever patients are being offered treatment, because we do, as, as I mentioned in answer to previous questions, we do want to provide that individual level of, of treatment because we know that's likely to be more successful. So I support the idea of bringing together these services, it will help us also address the continuum of care, to be able to track patients who are at risk all the way through the treatment system and after they leave the system as well.
So we've had questions that have come to us by members of the public, and one of the questions was, isn't it going to be more difficult for people who are going through withdrawal treatment to be around people who are on a long-term substance, continuing substance use, even though it's an opioid agonist?
Well, in fact, our goal for, for most people with opioid use disorder will be to get them on opioid agonist therapy, so the old model of weaning people off illegal drugs and not, and helping them through the withdrawal, not giving them anything, knowing now what we do in this crisis, and actually, this has been documented by the coroner, that many of the people who died have done so, either soon after going through detox or even while in abstinence-based recovery facilities, and we've had some of those deaths right here in our region, that that is not a safe approach to treatment. So in fact, we will be approaching all people with opioid use disorder in a similar way.
Okay, another question that came from a, a local resident is, how can a, a project of this scale, this large size, be done without significant negative impacts on the neighborhood?
Well, I think that actually it's the proponents who've, who've taken a look at that neighborhood, and, and I think my comments about the difference that we might expect in terms of response, we'd planned a different treatment service in this neighborhood, like a primary care clinic that people may embrace, that perhaps some of the concerns specifically about the Withdrawal Management Centre is because of that stigma associated with substance use disorder. So I'd like to say to people living in the community, first of all, there, this will serve your neighbors, that people with opioid use disorder reside all around Vancouver, the death rate is highest in the downtown east side, but you've seen data from your own fire chief, that if you have an overdose outside the downtown east side, you're actually at greater risk of death, because we don't have enough services in communities outside the downtown east side for people with substance use disorder, they shouldn't have to go to the downtown east side to get those services, this will serve people all over the city, and these people live all over the city, they live in all of our neighborhoods. So the size, that may be an issue, but I do think there's some stigma associated with the particular type of health service, and that's unfortunate, and we'd like to get your support in addressing that.
Can you also just describe for me, the, and maybe belay some, some of the fears around this, that people on long-term opioid agonist therapy, you know, are they able to live normal lives?
You probably encounter people every day who may be on long-term opioid agonist therapy, we have thousands of people in this province on Suboxone and Methadone, we've had people on Methadone for decades, and you can actually live a stable, normal life on opioid agonist therapy, I think that's one of the misconceptions about this treatment, it doesn't give you a buzz or make you hype, it, it, you live a normal life, and you would not know, in encountering these people in the course of your daily work or daily lives, that they might be on this treatment, just as you may not know if they're on treatment for another chronic condition like diabetes.
I hate to belay with this point, but these are all questions that have come from residents through emails to us, and this other question was, will this facility have negative effects on the vulnerable residents who live in nearby social housing? You've probably answered this, but it's a specific question again.
Well, I think there are many vulnerable people who need, might need the services of this facility, and I don't think providing care to people who need service will have a negative impact on vulnerable residents, I think it will demonstrate to vulnerable residents that we care about them, and we care about their chronic health issues, even if those include substance use disorder.
Thanks, Dr. Daly.
Thank you, councillor Dominado, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Dr. Daly, good to see you again, appreciate your acknowledgement of sort of the, the expansive addictions facing members of our community throughout the city. I'm curious, just, you know, we've had, as councillor Carr indicated, a number of questions around the implications of, of this housing and services facility here. I, I now imagine we're not necessarily breaking ground here, is this, are there examples in other communities, other municipalities, other jurisdictions where you have a similar co-location of services like this along the care continuum, as well as housing, a housing component?
Well, I, I think Bonnie also already addressed that we actually have some, some facilities, including operated by some of our partners like Portland Hotel Society, of where there are people living in housing facilities where we're also providing now services, in fact, we provide treatment to people living in housing facilities for opioid use disorder, we, we provide overdose prevention services in some of these facilities, so I know that in other communities, including places like Surrey, they've, they've opened clinical facilities to provide treatment to people for opioid use disorder, close to areas where they might live or in residential areas, because that's where the people are using their substances, so in fact, this is a model that has been, that you will see in other communities, the, providing this type of care, even within the buildings where people might live.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Wade, please, up to five minutes.
Yeah, and thanks for coming, and as the Chief Medical Health Officer, is, were you asking for more spaces in this facility, or are we looking at opening up another space as we're currently in the middle of a crisis?
No, I, well, the plans for this, it's, it's, it's long-term, and it's going to replace existing facilities, but it's an important part of our improvement in services for people with opioid use disorder, in fact, most people will not be managed within treatment beds, that there will be some need for that, it will also provide care for people with other substance use disorders such as alcohol use disorder, which is an area that we actually need to improve our, our treatment options, many people with alcohol use disorder in Vancouver, we have discovered, have died of opioid overdoses, so we need to provide better treatment for that population as well. But as to how many beds we might need, the, the primary purpose of this is not to look at an expansion of beds because of the opioid crisis, it's to improve the, the services that we've offered, I think as Bonnie's described, we're in inadequate facilities right now, but it's also to fit in with our new model of care for addictions, which will primarily not be based on beds and residents and treatment facilities, but it, that will be a component for certain people who need those services.
Thank you very much, and that's it for questions for you, thanks for your time this evening, on to Dr. Ronald Joe, and then Kevin Barlow would follow. Thanks very much, up to five minutes.
Sure, councillor, oops, and Mr. Mayor, I'm speaking on behalf of Vancouver Coastal Health, I'm the Medical Director for Substance Use Services, and sorry, there might be some repeat material, there's been a lot of questions. I'm giving it from the perspective that I've been a practicing physician in the downtown east side, as well as in the community in which the Withdrawal Management Centre is going to be, so I am aware of the population from both sides, I've been practicing over 20 years in addiction medicine, as well as eight years in, in the area. And as also mentioned by Dr. Daly, that the, I've been intimately involved and firsthand in treating people with opioid use disorder with the substitution treatments that have been described already. The new Withdrawal Management Centre will be operating for 24 hours, and also supported by substance use, formerly known as addiction medicine specialists like myself, and also, as Dr. Daly had mentioned, it would be different to traditional detox, because the, the, our old paradigm of thinking that someone goes into detox and gets better from substance use disorder is, is old, an old paradigm that simply doesn't work for a lot of individuals. And as Dr. Daly had mentioned, it can be harmful and can result in, in death, so we do need a completely new approach that aligns to our understanding that substance use or addiction is a, a chronic disease, and that we need to bring together the new services in the right manner, so that it's conducive to the, the, the actual treatment and, and good outcomes. As Dr. Daly had mentioned also, that it's not just the beds, we've created other services inside, within the downtown east side, and also outside of the downtown east side for opioid agonist treatment, an example of that is the downtown east side Connections Clinic, in which we see 200 to 300 individuals on opioid agonist treatment, and these are new individuals that we've seen that haven't, hadn't been on treatment before. So that's why the, our centre will play a unique and central role in Vancouver's continuum of substance use services, so for my clients that are in need, the Withdrawal Management Centre will manage alcohol withdrawal, as well as the opioids and stimulant withdrawal. It would specifically, because it's bed-based, really look at individuals that need to be in, in a bed in order to recover, versus having a clinic setting, like, like your question, councillor, about increasing beds, we don't have a net increase, given that our system is adapting to the, providing more outpatient services as well. In terms of, as Dr. Daly had mentioned, that we will be, in this new centre, integrating the opioid treatments by starting people on opioid agonist treatment while they're in detox versus completely detoxing people off of opioids, we know that there are many deaths attributed to that type of treatment in the past, and as Dr. Daly mentioned, the, the numbers are quite egregious. So when the new centre opens in three to five years, hopefully, we'll continue to provide the key services to support people, and we will also, as mentioned, receive people from the, the new St. Paul's Hospital proposal and other hospitals. So many of my clients have a history of trauma, and sometimes that prevents them from accessing the care they need, and this new centre will be, it will incorporate the trauma-informed care, cultural competency, meaning it will be a safe caring place in which culture is valued and supported, looks like it's five minutes.
Thank you very much for your time, do you have a question though, from councillor Carr?
Thank you so much for coming and speaking tonight, I know you're busy, my question is really around the fact that you've talked about other clinics where, in fact, opioid agonist therapy is being provided, some of the people who wrote to us from the community said that this is going to be the, this sort of major concentration in all of Vancouver, so it's going to have all of the, you know, not all of the, 80% of the detox beds, I think was one of the, one of the quotes, and, so can you please give me a picture, is that, is that accurate, or are there other, as you mentioned, other places, including the downtown east side, but other neighborhoods?
Yes, there are other detoxes in the downtown east side, onsite detox is an example, and as the, this, the, the question about whether a, a nonprofit is operating a detox, that's an example of a nonprofit, I've worked personally at onsite, and I've also worked at Harbor Light, I've also worked at Vancouver Detox, so I, I have a sense of where that, that is at. In terms of concentrating all the beds in one place, the predominance of treatment in our system is actually not bed-based, it's predominantly clinic-based, so I would say 90% of the, the treatment for clients does involve clinics where people are, don't need the support of a, a detox bed, so that's why there, there isn't a net increase in, in beds, and yes, there, there will be a concentration of more beds in this site, as, as proposed, however, in terms of the number of people receiving addictions treatment, I would say as a result of the initiatives we've provided at Vancouver Coastal Health, like opening the new downtown east side Connections Clinic, expanding opioid agonist treatment among a lot of the primary care clinics, for example, the numbers are two to three times in, in terms of treatment clients, as opposed to the number of clients we were treating prior to the crisis.
That's very helpful, thank you very much.
Thanks very much, and that's all the questions this evening, thank you for your time, on to Kevin Barlow, please.
Good evening, everyone, I was so eager to speak to this, I was here at 9:00 a.m. this morning, then I said, nobody's around. Thank you for having this opportunity to hear us, I speak in favor of this development, as you know, the Grandview Woodland area has a very high indigenous population, so even though this project is not indigenous-specific, there's a lot of our people that live in the community, in the neighborhood, and a number of our agencies as well. I think it's strategic in the sense that the location of it, and the Healing and Wellness Centre at 312 Main, and the healing services that we provide at our agency up at Slogan and Hastings, are well-placed to serve the needs of our community, and I, even though our role with this particular project is quite small in terms of a social enterprise, we have been working with Van City Community Foundation and the Radius Social Innovation Hub at Simon Fraser, to, to define that social enterprise if, if this is approved, and we're trying to keep in the theme of health and wellness, and do something that can help people find a little bit of purpose while they're trying to stabilize their lives. As someone myself who was in recovery, or is in recovery, and when I got sober, I needed that opportunity to kind of stabilize my life, and, and so these transitional beds, I think are really critical to letting, keeping people in that safety net, and then, then they can come to our services up at Slogan and Hastings, and then once 312 Main gets going, I think that's an important element, too. I also attest to the fact that being in recovery myself, and when I've had to go downtown east side to some of our agencies, there's people that try to sell me drugs, too, you know, so I think when we're trying to support people to make some changes in their lives, like if you keep them in an area where there's a lot of this activity, there are triggers and, and there are challenges, so although there are people that are in that neighborhood, and that's their neighborhood and their home, and, and they're happy to stay there, if you drive through, you'll see a lot of people with physical challenges that make it hard for them to come up to other areas, you know, so we certainly have to support the 312 Main Health and Healing and Wellness Centre, as well as this one as well. I, I don't know what else to say, except that I think, you know, we embrace a number of healing opportunities in the indigenous community, there's no residential indigenous-specific treatment centers in, in Vancouver Coastal Health area, you know, so they have to go away from this area if, if they want to go into residential treatment, so the more we can have services here that meet people at various stages of their recovery, the better, and I think eventually, hopefully, as we work with First Nations Health Authority and others, other services can be made available as well, so I think I'm ahead of my time.
Great, thanks, I just had a quick question for you, and it does say on the sheet, you're the CEO of the Metro Vancouver Aboriginal Executive Council, is that correct? And maybe you could just explain a little bit about what the council does?
So we're like an umbrella organization that serves a majority of the Aboriginal nonprofits in Metro Vancouver, we have currently 24 member organizations, like the Vancouver Aboriginal Friendship Centre, Urban Native Youth Association, Native Education College, and, and those types of places. Urban Native Youth Association, Native Education College, and those types of places. So they actually, that's our council, they come together and they direct me to respond to the various needs that they see in the community. So they've been around since 2009, and we currently estimate there's about 70,000 Indigenous people in Metro Vancouver. So it's a sizable population. It's also a pretty sizable population of the overall provincial Aboriginal population. So, you know, people require a lot of these services here. We're overrepresented in the opioid crisis, and we have a task force that's also dealing with that particular issue. So a number of these issues, I think, are really related, I think, to the fact that we need more trauma-informed culturally-based programming. And even though this particular service at First and Clark won't be Indigenous-specific, I'm quite certain they're going to be seeing Indigenous people. And I think the linkage they can have to our services, which provides mental wellness and substance use counselling services, is going to be quite strong.
Great. Thank you very much for your time and coming in this evening. Okay, now we're going to move to the public section. We have, I'll just read a few names out, just so you can get ready. First, we have David Chen, second, Thomas Ferguson, third Rodney Haynes, four Todd Kenneth, and fifth Dave Stanforth. So as you come up to speak, it's five minutes, and then there'll be time for questions if councillors ask. So Mr. Chen, please go ahead.
Your worship and honoured council members, thank you for the privilege of, again, taking a moment of your time to speak. As you know, my name is David Chen, I'm a financial planner, I'm also a renter in Strathcona, so I am a neighbour to a lot of the people in the downtown east side, as well as within our community, there are a lot of people that are within BC Housing and are on social services. This project is difficult. I don't envy your position. There are elements of it that are really important, really nice, but there are also elements that are very troubling. And the problem is that you have a decision that's very binary. It's support or decline. And because of that, unfortunately, I have to say that I don't support this, because there are some problems. First of all, there's an affordability issue, and it's been brought up by many of the council members here, and it's also within the documentation that 50% of this is at market rate. The market rate they've put there, within their own parameters, says that you would need an income of $100,000 a year to afford that. The median income in Vancouver is about $80,000. That means that this is not affordable to the majority of the people out there. Now, when you're thinking about affordability, this is not just about providing supply. The analogy I like to use is like a gas war. If you bring another retailer online with the same price, no change in price. You bring a retailer online that has a lower price, suddenly you have a gas war. And that's what's more likely to trigger a change. So I think that, you know, knowing that during the election, councillor Carr, you've said previously, you questioned whether or not this is the right supply. Your worship, you've also said you want to bring affordable housing online. I would say make a stance and say, "We need to commit to these affordable rates, not this 50% CMHC." It is not affordable for the majority of Vancouverites. There are also people that point out that even the hills rate is not really affordable. And I can say that I would actually buy that. There are a lot of people I've talked to that say, "I can't afford to have a family." Well, why is it that you have to be able to afford to have a family to have a family? Wouldn't this be a better society if we actually had affordable housing so that you could conceive to have a family? Whether or not you could do that in a market rate or not. Now, we have to think about this. This is the future of Vancouver. The tax base is governed by how many people that you have here, youngsters that are coming up online. A recent newspaper report pointed out that 40% of Vancouverites don't expect their children to stay in Vancouver. That's a startling number of loss. So I think that we really need to think about what we're doing with that. Now, looking at two other problems. Another one is with the pollution. And I know some people go, "Ah, you know, what are you going to do about it?" Well, actually, we have technology for that. One of my clients used to make scrubbers for cruise liners. So you can install scrubbers into the air circulation system to at least significantly reduce the pollution problem. There have been articles that have been published that point out that any high density that's placed around industrial routes has a significant increase in the pollution that the residents are exposed to. So I think we need to think about that, especially when you're trying to sell this as a family housing project. The next thing that's problematic is actually parking. So during the election, we had a lot of discussions, and discussions with people with disabilities. And the interesting thing that we didn't think about at the time is that disabilities actually increases with age. The probability that you're going to suffer mobility disability as you age is going to be quite dramatic. And a lot of those individuals have pointed out that they prefer to use their own mechanized transport. They can't use bicycles, they don't want to use transit, DART vehicles, hard to get a hold of, you know, forget taxis and things like that. Now, as we move into the future, we're talking about electrifying vehicles. So I would ask you this question. How do you recharge your vehicle if it's a personalized motorized transport, if you don't have a place to park the thing? So what you have with the parking number now is great for today. Add 20 years, and when people start having families, and they start aging, and they start having disabilities, that's what you need to anticipate. You're building a building with a 60-plus-year lifespan. Think about that future need. So with that all in mind, I would say that unfortunately, I actually have to say I don't support this project until you can actually fix those components. Thank you.
You've got a couple of questions, if you just want to hang on there one sec. And councillor Dejana Ova, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Mr. Chen, how would you, you had said that we should set the rates to be lower, but I'm wondering how you would then suggest that the project is paid for and maintained? Because, I mean, you're getting into specific election promises, but you also, during the election, said that things needed to be sustainable. So how would you propose paying for the property maintenance with lower rents, considering the cost of the building? And have you ever, have you ever seen or gone through a pro forma for a building like this?
So the interesting thing is, we all went to that pro forma talk with Purpose Built Rentals, and I've seen the numbers, and I get where they can cut costs and things like that. I also know where they can jig costs. Now, one of the things to answer your question is, within our strata, we had an interesting situation where we had an excess of parking. So I've seen within some of the building codes, it recommends something like .8 per unit. And I think that's a decent number, because even if you have excess, you can rent out those spots. And those spots can bring in revenue to the building. You know, again, it is also social housing. So you're asking a problem from a commercial market type of perspective, when it's a social housing thing, which really is still very dependent on government help.
Okay, well, I mean, if you take something from one bucket, then there's less in that bucket. You have to, you know, I'm not sure that my question was answered, but I'm not sure that it was understood. So I'll try and ask a similar question to another one of your comments, but you had said that housing for people earning 100, or households, you said people, but I'm guessing you mean households.
Well, it's households, yes.
Earning $100,000 a year, that that's who this would sustain. Those people are classified as the missing middle, or they would be people kind of in my age group, the millennial age group, who are leaving Vancouver because they can't afford housing here. So do you, do you think there's not a need for that income bracket to have rental housing at these rates?
There's always need, but like everything else, when you can set a rate so it's more affordable, you have more ability to move around. So if you have people that have higher income and there's capacity, certainly you can rent it to them. If you have more people that have a lower capacity, if your numbers work with the lower numbers, then that's what you can support. I mean, this is the thing, within business, you can go, "Okay, we're going to just go, these are our costs, and we don't care what the rent does."
Well, that's, so the first part of my question was answered as to what your opinion is on that. When it comes to what you were talking about, it being completely social housing, the city of Vancouver's approach, and I just asked staff for clarification on this last week, was to integrate different, not only income levels, but different rents together. So we're not, and I'm going to use the term ghettoizing housing, so we're not putting sort of the social housing over here and the market housing over there. This building, reading the policy report, does that. Do you agree with that approach?
I'm not saying that you have to segregate, but at the same time...
I know you're not saying that, but you don't have to answer my question, but do you agree with that approach?
I agree with not segregating. What I disagree with is that top margin is not affordable to a majority of the people in Vancouver, which doesn't give you the flexibility to try and maintain that project if the pro forma's not going to allow you to have less rent than that.
So do you, my last question is, do you think that these units that will be, that would be rented, and as you had mentioned, and you're correct, the policy report does state that people would have income of up to $100,000 a year per household? So it wouldn't be individuals, it would be per household. Do you think those units will go unrented?
Well, that's a good question, because if they go unrented, how are you going to pay for it? I mean, they're going to try...
I'm asking your opinion. Do you think in this rental market...
My opinion, they're going to find capacity. There's a lot of people that want to come in and pay that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I've got a couple of questions for you. I just wanted to switch gears about the actual kind of core of this project, which is the new medical facilities. I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on those.
You mean in terms of what they're proposing for the bottom level?
Yes.
Yeah. Like I said, those are the components that I'm all for.
Okay.
You know, that's why I'm saying this is troubling, because there's components that sort of don't work, and there's components that are really important.
Okay. And I mean, so it would be possible to kind of construct these things without any housing attached at all. So I guess that's another way to look at it, too. Would you agree that that's kind, I mean, that's kind of the traditional model, is to not attach housing in these kind of...
Well, why not explore that? Put all the numbers on the table and let the council members and the city look at it and say, "What do we prefer?"
So no housing at all would also be an option you'd want to explore?
If there's a trade-off, that you're going to build those medical facilities, and you're now going to take over the old ones and free them up, those can be turned into housing. I mean, there's nothing that says you have to blend these together. But the question is, you know, when you're trying to make this make sense, because there's some housing in there that sounds great, and you've got some, you know, medical, you know, programs that sound great, but then you've got problems that are going to crop in with affordability, then that becomes problematic.
Okay. Thanks very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Great. On to Thomas Ferguson, please, up to five minutes. Just getting my, please, go ahead.
Thank you, councillors, mayor. I've lived in Grandview Woodland for almost 16 years, and I love how diverse and dynamic it is. But I have trouble with the scope of this development as proposed. Vancouver Coastal Health wants detox to be community-based, which I support, but I believe community-based detox should also be scaled to the community. As proposed, though, this detox at approximately 55,000 square feet will be five times larger than the current East Second detox. It will extend the entire block from Clark to McLean. Plus, with 91 beds total, this facility will be the country's largest withdrawal management centre. That's not the appropriate size for our residential neighbourhood, and the Grandview Woodland community plan does not call for all of Vancouver sobering beds and more than 80% of the deep city's detox beds to be moved to our community. And just to be clear, this is not about stigma. I would have serious trouble if this was a 55,000-square-foot supermarket that operated 24/7. For more than a decade, Vancouver Coastal Health has been looking to replace the East Second detox, and by closing that facility along with Harbour Light, the city will actually lose detox beds with this development. Vancouver Coastal Health estimates it will take three to five years to build this facility, and a Freedom of Information request reveals Coastal Health wants to supersize this detox to realize operational efficiencies. In other words, to save money. So I don't see this facility as being a response to our opioid crisis. Combining detox sobering and social housing is an experimental model. The development partners point to Portland's, previously, they've pointed to Portland's Blackburn Building as inspiration, but it does not provide detox or sobering, only housing for vulnerable populations. They also point to Victoria, but they do not combine detox and sobering, nor does Surrey or Seattle. In 2009, former BC Supreme Court Judge William Davies recommended a standalone sobering centre for Vancouver after the inquiry into the death of Frank Paul. Some who work with people with addictions say standalone centres are preferable, because pressuring someone into treatment before they're ready isn't effective. Plus, the reality is that a lot of people who go for sobering don't want to go to detox. In Surrey, those who are motivated to go from sobering to detox are easily taken from one facility to another. In both Surrey and Victoria, people can stay in sobering a maximum of 23 hours. In Victoria, they have to be off-site for six hours, and many of their clients are regulars to the centre. Surrey's Sobering Centre does roughly 600 intakes a month, including a large number of repeat visits. So that's the number of visits we could be looking at for this sobering centre in this residential community, more than 7,000 a year. This development will bring intoxicated people from across the entire city, this is for the sobering aspect, some against their will by police vehicle, and they will be held until they sober up a minimum of four hours and then released in our community. And yet, within three blocks of this proposed development, there are more than 500 units of social housing, including three complexes of Indigenous housing, many with vulnerable families. So that is a real concern for me. The entrance to this sobering centre will be close to Clark and First. Clark is a busy six-lane truck route, as we all know, and East First is a mini-highway. It's a dangerous intersection. As someone who lives in the community, it's intimidating to use as a pedestrian. This development's traffic impact study states that First and Clark has a higher number of collisions than the typical comparable intersection. So I'm concerned for the people who have sobered up for just four hours and then leave this facility and have to navigate Clark and First on foot. And due to the scale of this facility and how it's situated, vehicles will have to access the building from the lane, but from Clark, you can only turn into this laneway if you're heading north. And to exit onto Clark from the lane, you also can only head north. That means many ambulances and police vehicles, as well as trucks, will have to navigate our residential streets to enter and leave this facility. These are some of my concerns about this development as proposed, and I encourage you to bring back a revised proposal that supports social housing and detox that is scaled to our community and separate sobering. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you've got a question here from councillor Dejana Ova. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. I assume you stayed to listen to the presentation that we had heard before on the case studies?
I've heard many of the presentations, yes.
So the presentation that we received, talking about the individualized treatment plans and giving us the examples of, for instance, the mother who would have to leave her children to, so you're talking about families, vulnerable families, being next to this centre. Do you, do you also, like, what I'm hearing from staff, and I can ask this question as a follow-up, is some of these people who are living in the units, at different income levels, would be possibly using this centre confidentially? But I'm sure that the numbers would be something that Vancouver Coastal Health would be able to provide us with. I mean, do you think that those people who are living in that housing will not be using any of the services there?
So I'm in favor of detox. I'm opposed to the scale of this development, and I'm concerned about the sobering, bringing intoxicated people from the entire city to our neighbourhood, who after they sober up will be released and then can just return to the sobering once they need to sober up again. So I support all aspects of detox. I grew up in a family with addiction issues.
So, thank you very much. I'm also wondering, you don't have to answer this question, but these are the hard decisions that I have to make as a city councillor, and we have to really public hearing, it's not just like a regular council meeting. We're tasked with, you know, very legal and specific reasons, and we have to look within the policy here. But you had said that, you know, you're concerned with people being brought here for detox. May I ask you, where do you think we should bring those people? Where would be a better place?
I'm not concerned about bringing people with detox, I'm concerned about the scale of the development.
All right, you had just said bringing people, you were concerned with bringing the people to sober up. Well, oh, sorry, sorry, yes, yeah, I do understand that. I misstated that. The people who are being brought to sober up, as you've stated, where do you think we should bring them instead?
Well, I think it should be to a sobering centre, but I don't think it should be in our residential neighbourhood. This is residential land that you're being asked to rezone. So we're so, like...
So where, where do you think that should be? Because, right... So where do you think that should be? Because right now, I think that, and I will ask staff this question, but I think a lot of them are being brought to the Vancouver jail. I think that, I would like to know, is there a place that you would suggest, or would you ask that we recommend, we ask our staff, where else we could do this?
Well, I'm in favour of sobering centres. I don't think people who are nonviolent should be taken to jail. So I believe in it. I just don't, I don't believe in combining the detox and sobering, and I don't believe in the scale. I actually think since addiction issues affect everyone, well, I believe they affect most people in the city, they should be across the city, not just in one residential neighbourhood.
Thank you. You definitely have impacted my questions to staff, and I will be sending some of those in.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. You also have questions from councillor Hardwick. Please, go ahead.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Been thinking about your comments that this is experimental and blending these two pieces together. But that seems to me that that's breaking down into two issues. One is scale, and the other is stigma, as was described by one of the earlier speakers. What I think I heard you say is that you're not concerned about stigma per se, but rather about the scale. So if there was some sobering, you know, can you elaborate a little bit more? Because I think what we're trying to wrap our heads around is, you know, it has been suggested there needs to be a revised proposal. What does that look like? Are we saying none of the mix, or it's just too big, or can you elaborate?
Yes. In terms of stigma, I take issue with putting the detox and sobering in one big centre on the corner of Clark and First, in a monolithic, I'm sorry, my mouth is dry, in a monolithic building that has an institutional look. I mean, that's how to, oh, thank you very much. To me, that's how to stigmatise. I would suggest having detox throughout the city, excuse me, I'm not used to doing this, would be a more appropriate, less, with model with less stigma. I mean, this is a, this is a monolithic structure.
So you don't have a problem with combining these two elements?
I do, I take issue with combining sobering and detox. I, people-
No, no, my question is, was, do you have a problem with housing together with a facility?
Well, it's an unproven model. We don't have, Vancouver Coastal Health has not pointed to any model. The models they pointed to as inspiration, when we looked into them, are not, do not combine all, I'm calling them three elements, detox, housing, and sobering.
Okay, so you wouldn't have a problem with detox and housing, you just don't want detox and sobering?
I'm concerned about putting sobering in that building that could bring 7,000 people to the neighbourhood. Once they sober up for four hours, they could be out on the street in, on our neighbourhood. And I'm concerned about the effect of sobering and detox. Sobering is people who aren't ready to stop using. Detox is people who have a desire to stop using.
So, scale then-
Scale is a main issue for me.
I'm trying to dissect these various elements that you're talking about, because we are blending a bunch of different things in to make this work.
Yes.
Scale, it's too many units, it's too much site coverage, it's too tall, it's-
I support all the housing, right? Like, that's great.
Okay, so you're good on the housing-
Yes.
-in terms of scale. It's just really the way that you're blending the housing together with the combination of detox and sobering?
Well, it's a huge, it's a huge medical facility on residential land. But if it was a huge supermarket, if it was a huge eye clinic, I would still oppose having it that size on residential land. It's a residential neighbourhood. I mean, you know, 22% of the site is light industrial, and the rest is residential.
So, again, the scale argument, you're trying to put everything into one location as opposed to having more distributed approach throughout the body of the city?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all your questions. Thanks for us this evening.
Thank you for the water.
Okay, so Rodney Hines. And then we'll have Todd Kenneth and Dave Staniforth, followed by Scott Neufeld. Mr. Hines, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Hello, my name is Rodney Hines. I'm a member of the Metlekatla First Nation. I've lived within a half-block of McLean Drive and Gravely Street in Vancouver for 21 years. This includes six years of living at Vancouver Native Housing at 1339 Gravely Street, and I'm currently a resident of the 1600 block of McLean, the same block as the proposed rezoning. I'm opposed to the current plans for this massive project in my neighbourhood of Grandview Woodlands. The building's size and scope is much too large and dwarfs the buildings around it as it is currently designed. As a person whose family has been deeply affected by addictions, I believe that detox facilities are a necessary part of the solution. However, I've seen no evidence at other more appropriate sites were studied or assessed and have been given no good reason why this location was chosen, other than it would contain this facility's gargantuan size. A facility of this size did not fit well within our community of apartments, townhouses, and detached multifamily houses. This building's street-level design is institutional with few windows and lack of thought when it comes to streetscape. I'm opposed to the current plans for a detox and sobering centre of this size, because as a community-based facility, I believe it's important that it does not overwhelm the current community with its massive size and institutional feel. I believe that a smaller facility, a size to fit into a community setting, will create trust and respect between existing community members, facility employees, and patients using the facility. No proponent of this project has ever offered to work with community members to reduce the size of the current detox design, or to make it more relatable to the people and buildings around it. It seems to me that the design, size, and location of this project were predetermined, with community consultation merely being an afterthought and a necessary step required by city bylaws. A mere stepping stone to its eventual completion is planned from the beginning. Parking and traffic issues have not been addressed adequately under the current plan. The neighbourhood stretching five blocks around the proposed site has minimal street parking for residents. The scope of the project adds 150,000 square metres of residential health and research facility, which brings in a huge increase in residents, patients, and staff to the neighbourhood, all creating greater strain on available parking and traffic patterns. Yes, people who live in B.C. housing and other types of social housing own cars despite good access to transit. Parking stalls in the building are inadequate for residents and employees. The proposed project is placed at Clark Drive and First Avenue, which are extremely busy arteries feeding into the city. At this time, traffic on First Avenue turning onto McLean is perilous, with speeding by those attempting to avoid traffic wait times at Clark and First Avenue. The proposed design uses the existing alley as the centre's main drop-off and underground parking entrance, and will only reduce viable parking and increase dangerous traffic patterns. There's simply not enough, there's simply not enough infrastructure to cope with the proposed scope of this project. Residents and employees' cars, emergency vehicles, deliveries, and visitors' cars will clog our small street with no other viable option for moving traffic in and out of the building. Vehicles heading west down the alley may only turn right, leading to excessive congestion on McLean Drive for those wanting to head to destinations southeast or west. There was no public consultation or any information shared in advance of extensive planning and design by proponents of this project. If the proposed rezoning is approved, the decision will amount to a gross disregard to some of our community's concerns. It seems that consultation thus far has been minimal, with planning that has not included any community input until the process is way too far along. I believe that this project was planned without us and in spite of us. The idea of consolidating so many different uses in one building creates a confusing array of concerns that pit our city's fentanyl and housing crises against each other and community residents. It makes one think that this may have been intentional, in order to negate neighbourhood concerns and turn housing advocates against residents that are overwhelmed with-
I'd just like to remind you, we're not supposed to, you know, impute anybody's reputation here, so just to-
Sorry about that. We have been placed in a situation where our concerns are ignored when we are merely asking for responsible and sensitive planning that takes into account the concerns of residents deeply committed to the neighbourhood. In closing, my opinion is that many of the people who are in favour of this project, as it has been presented, are part of a well-oiled machine-
Again, just again, not to impute anybody's reputation here, just stick to the facts of the case.
Okay.
Actually, you're out of time now, so thanks very much for your-
Okay, thank you.
But you do have a question from councillor Hardwick.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your very detailed analysis. You've been doing this for a while. The devil is in the details, and you know the neighbourhood intimately, obviously, by the description that you've put in there. Why do you think this location was chosen?
Well, I do understand that it's close to the downtown east side and that there is an opioid crisis, so I understand that that is one of the reasons. But I think my main issue is not with the location as much as the size. If it had been smaller and more to scale with the community, I would feel much more comfortable with it.
So I take your point. I heard speakers earlier referring to this as it will be, as it is a fait accompli. And that is really at the core of what I think I've heard you say here, is that this has been treated as a done deal and that the public process has been later and less involved in, say, a co-creation process to look at how this could be best integrated into the neighbourhood.
I do feel a bit let down by the process, so I guess the only, I mean, I haven't had that much experience with planning processes, but I did, I did notice that the Britannia Community Centre is trying to plan for future changes, and, you know, I noticed that the way there were processes that included community members in the actual planning of the buildings and the site design and things like that.
Well, I'm sure the applicant and staff are hearing that. So you don't have an objection to the use here, the combination of housing together with the facility? It's the scale, if I were to put it in a nutshell for you?
It is the scale, but, I mean, not to impugn anyone, but it did make it confusing that the housing and the centre were combined, which, when we expressed, or when I expressed any kind of dissatisfaction with the combination of those two, I was painted as somebody that was opposed to housing or social housing, which isn't the case at all. You know, I moved, when I moved into that neighbourhood, Grandview Woodlands had plenty of social housing, and that was an expectation of mine, that I'd be living with all kinds of different people at different socio-economic levels. And so I guess, you know, my, it was, it was a problem for me, because it was difficult to be against a portion of the project, without also being painted as an anti-housing person.
So, but just to be clear, you're not an anti-housing person?
No.
And you can see an opportunity to be combining these functions within this site?
Sure.
It's ultimately a question of scale?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks for us for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry, I need to have another question. Councillor Bly.
Hi there, I just have a quick question.
Great.
I'm right over here. Hi, thanks very much. So, can you weigh in on the Grandview Woodlands plan as we see the rest of that neighbourhood right now? Just what's your take on it, given the clear plastic models?
I guess, you know, I mean, it's difficult as a resident that my house has a plastic lock on top, because it's just, you know, it's not my house. It's like the future of the neighbourhood, and I understand that the neighbourhood has to have a future and densification has to happen. But it does make me feel as though my concerns have not been regarded with any kind of importance. You know, this was available, and this was available at the first information session, this particular model. And, you know, I mean, yeah, I mean, it wasn't just me, it was many other people that looked at their houses and said, oh, yeah, there's big plastic blocks on our houses, as though they don't even exist anymore.
Yeah, I can appreciate that. So when you talk about scale, I know this is asking you to sort of take yourself and be as objective as you possibly can. If you didn't live in the neighbourhood and you looked at that plan, what do you think about the scale?
I guess, you know, I could, I could deal with the building as is, if, at that, at this scale, if it were all housing or housing with a detox centre that was scaled down. The sobering centre, I feel frightening, it feels frightening to me, the sobering centre, really, if, you know, colloquially known as like a drunk tank, right? I mean, that is what, that is what people call it. Nobody, nobody knows what a sobering centre is.
That's a really good question, and that will be one that I will send to staff. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Another question for you from councillor Kirby Young. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you for raising some really good points about the importance of consultation and just understanding of what the different components are. As a resident of the neighbourhood, and given sort of some of your housing experience, if you had an option, would you rent one of these units in a combined facility of this nature that had multiple purposes in it? Would you choose to reside there?
Yes.
Okay. And may I ask, why?
Well, because not having a place to live, or not being able to afford a place to live is, you know, it's, sometimes you can't choose what you would like. You have to choose what you need to choose in order to have a home. So, you know, and I've been in that, you know, I was a student for a long time, and I had, you know, I did have a hard time finding a place to live. And that is when I lived in, I lived in social housing, and I, it was, I really appreciated it. It was, I was very lucky, actually, to live there. And so I just, that's, I mean, that's why I just, I feel very strongly that social housing is really great, because, I mean, I benefited from it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. Another question for you from councillor Dejanova. Please, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I've asked this question before this evening, but it's more along the lines of integrated housing. Thank you, first of all, for sharing your experience and your last question. It's, it's good to hear, and it helps to inform our decisions to hear people's personal experiences. And I'm wondering how you feel about integrating the housing with different income levels, social housing and market housing. As I'd said before, I'm not sure if you'd heard to speak in my question, I mean, do you consider sort of segregating social housing somewhat as ghettoising social housing?
Yeah, I mean, I have only ever lived in one type of social housing, which was basically ghettoised. So, and I can't say that I think that was a really great, it wasn't, it didn't, I don't think it worked very well, personally. So I'm, I like the mix of different income levels. Just, you know, sort of, I think it just makes for a richer kind of place to live, and it just is not, you know, you don't get, there were a lot of, how shall I say, like, there were some really extreme social issues in the building that I was living in, and I think part of that is because there were just so many people of one income level. So I do support a mix.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's it for questions. Thanks very much for your time this evening. Right, so we're on to Dave Staniforth.
Hi.
Todd Kenneth.
Yeah, that's-
Sorry about that.
No problem. My name's Todd. Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to speak here tonight, and I'm in support of the proposal. And my reasons for support are largely personal ones and experiential. So the last 15, 20 years, I've been a person who's had to access these services, withdrawal management, transitional housing, sobering units, you name it, I've had to access it. So there's great importance for that in our city, as you all, as you all know. Detox and withdrawal management services also was the first time, and a lot of people need to hear this, the first time in a lot of years of my life where I received that first gentle, caring human touch again. And it was my first introduction to there might be a way out of this lifestyle and a way to proceed through life in a different way. I didn't know that for a great many years, living on the street in the downtown east side. In my experience with a lot of these services at those times, they were very spread out. I mean, I'm going back to years where there was just the Vancouver Detox Maple Cottage out in the, out in New West, and, and those services were very hard to access because they were so spread out. So the, the- So the continuum aspect of this project is very, very important. I understand the gentleman's concerns about having the housing and the detox and the sobering so close together, but, you know, that space between somebody sobering up to maybe even being introduced to detox as a route to go to sobering, then to move to transitional housing, those are so important aspects and we lose, so many people fall through the cracks because of that. I also stand in support of this because I believe, like myself, who's gone through this, and I've been clean and sober now for several years, that are wanting and waiting for these same experiences that I had, you know, that people, like myself now, I'm employed, I pay taxes, I'm contributing to society again, and I'm a valued member of society again. So I think there's many people like myself waiting for those experiences, just to have a shot at a life again. I also support this because of the impact that it's having on our city, I mean, on our first responders, on hospitals, on police, and, I mean, on all of us, in our homes and in our very communities, the impact that this is having. I know it affects me daily. So I only think it can be a win-win in that area as well. And, you know, isn't there the aspect that I think too, that isn't how we treat our most vulnerable and those people that are most hurting in our society a reflection of who we want to be as a society and as a city? So I think that there's another strong point of supporting this. Don't think I'll take up the whole five minutes, but I just wanted to close with, I live in a housing project at 1723 Victoria Drive and First. It's called the Cohere Building. And it was strongly opposed, right in this chamber, I believe back in 2012. And for many reasons, because there's a large, there's a big mix, diversity of different backgrounds, our social and economic. And I'm proud to say that after we've all moved in there last March, and we've been there a year, a year now, all living together, and the only complaints we've received from the community are parking. Imagine that in this city. You know, and we've had our first year inspection, and it's one of the cleaner buildings they've seen. So, yeah, I would just ask council and everybody here opposed and for to just search their hearts and really that this is something that our city really, really needs. Yeah, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much for your presentation. And no questions at the moment, so that's good. Thank you very much. Now on to Dave Staniforth. We'll have Scott Newfeld, Riley Wood and Karen Sawat... 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 I'm sorry, I'm a little tired this evening. Sawataski? Sorry. Go ahead, Scott, please.
Mayor and council, I have a deep and abiding fear of public speaking, so I hope that speaks to how strongly I feel about this project. So I'm a resident of Grandview Woodlands. My partner, Deanna, and our three-year-old daughter, Elsie, live just a few blocks away from where this proposed development will be. Elsie was born in a house in this neighbourhood and we plan to raise her here on the drive. Deanna and I are fully supportive of this development proposal. One of the things we really value about the neighbourhood that we live in is its inclusivity and its diversity. We feel that this development with its social housing component will contribute positively to the character of our neighbourhood. I'm also a nurse who works in mental health and substance use, and I can attest to the ongoing need for the services that will be offered at First and Clark. Other speakers have mentioned and will attest to other positives of this development. I'd like to draw attention to the 20 proposed transitional housing beds that'll house individuals who have completed withdrawal management and are awaiting residential treatment. As Dr Daly mentioned, the time just after completing detox is a precarious one, as a person's tolerance is greatly reduced and they're at a much greater risk for overdose. It is also a real hardship to have someone complete detox and then have to return to their home environment while they await residential treatment. Many relapse and some die while waiting for residential treatment bed. With the transitional beds proposed in this proposal, individuals will have a place to wait in safety as they move along the recovery continuum. And I just have to say, you know, I've had my personal recovery journey as well that went through Vancouver Detox. The concern and the stigma kind of around a detox facility is pretty much the last place where people are going to be using drugs in or around. And I think mixing it with the housing is a real signal to the, those addicted and those suffering from these substance use disorders that, it's just a normalizing factor to have it with the housing. The idea that we have to kind of hide the detox over, you know, at the Vancouver Detox site, which is an old converted dog pound, and down at Harbour Light, which is like in the heart of the downtown east side and between two shelters, that that is where we feel we have to be locating our detox, I think is, communicates something to those with substance use disorders. And I feel that mixing this in with the housing, mixing it in with this residential neighbourhood is a way to demonstrate that the de-stigmatized attitude we need to take toward this disease. In closing, I would emphasise that lives will be saved and lives improved by this proposed development, and I urge council to approve this proposal.
Thanks very much. I do have a question for you from councillor Hardwick.
Hi there.
Hi.
Quick question.
Yep.
One of the earlier speakers identified the combination of detox and sobering together in the same facility as a potential issue.
I mean, they're currently co-located at Vancouver Detox.
But we're talking about on a 5X scale in terms of magnitude, much larger from what I understand from the description.
Yep.
So we're looking at 55,000 square feet and a 5X size combining these with housing. So...
Well, I mean, if you, I mean, what are the problems currently associated with having those services co-located?
Well, again, they've never been...
Because if they're minimal, if you locate it by five, that's still a minimal increase, right? Like, what are the, what are the problems we're envisioning?
I'm not envisioning any, I'm asking you a question.
Yep.
I'm trying to understand that we're putting housing together with these uses in blending them together in an experimental way, so this is a new thing that we're trying to wrap our heads around.
Right.
And what we heard was that, you know, there's people that are not focused on the stigma are in fact focused on the scale of this.
Okay.
And so what I'm trying to wrap my head around is the balance between these elements. And so we're dealing with a much larger facility. We've talked about this being the centre of, for the city, really, for this. And I'm asking specifically about that because the devil is in the details about the balance between these elements.
Okay, well, what I'd say is there's currently a co-located sobering and detox facility in a residential neighbourhood. So whether the, you know, apartments are on top of the sobering facility or next to the sobering facility, as they currently are, I actually don't see that as a radical leap.
So you think it's just stigma, it's not scale?
I'm not speaking to anybody else's motives or anything like that. I'm, when I was talking about stigma, I'm saying co-locating them, saying that we can have housing on top of a detox facility, on top of a withdrawal management sobering, on top of a transitional housing facility, is a way of saying we don't need to isolate those with substance use disorder, right? We don't need to shut them off somewhere into a corner.
Thanks very much. That's the five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Riley Wood, please, then Karen Sawataski. Sorry. Did I miss that again? Scott Newfeld. I'm sorry, I just keep crossing out the wrong name.
And we have a presentation.
Okay. So, sorry, Scott Newfeld.
Well, good evening, mayor and council, members of the public. My name is Scott Newfeld. I am a husband, a father of two young boys, a resident of the Cohere community like Dave and Todd, a member of Grandview Church, a writing workshop facilitator at the onsite detox centre in the downtown east side, so as a PhD student at SFU in the BC Centre on Substance Use. I've also lived in the Grandview Woodland neighbourhood for the past five years, and it is my home. I'm honoured to have the opportunity tonight to speak to you and like to convey my support for the proposed rezoning of 1636 Clark Drive. Social housing and withdrawal management services are essential investments in our city in this time of both a housing crisis and an overdose crisis. We need more of these services and we need them on a large scale. And I'm not alone in my support. Over the past six months, some friends and I have worked together to mobilise support for this project, connecting with people in our neighbourhood, our housing communities and our church, who recognise the need for expanded housing and detox services in our community. To be clear, we are not a well-oiled machine and we are not funded by or connected to developers or the proponents, as some have insinuated. Many of our friends in the community wanted to speak tonight but couldn't make it, so instead we took photos of them, which my friend Ben here will display on the screen as I continue to speak. These 40 faces with their messages of support and welcome stand with me in my support of this proposal. Some speakers tonight have suggested that this proposal is too big, but I take a different view. The scale of the challenges our city is facing around unaffordable housing, homelessness and substance use are enormous, and the responses that they require are big. Supporting a large-scale project like this sends a message that the city is taking bold action to address these issues immediately, or it could send that message. In 2018, the city recorded its highest numbers of street and shelter homeless folks ever. The need for social housing accessible to people on income assistance, disability or pensions has therefore never been greater. However, as we've heard already tonight, in the current proposal, the majority of these units would still be unaffordable to people on income assistance, disability or pensions. So I urge you, mayor and council, to advocate for BC Housing to do everything that they can to deepen affordability at this site. More generally, I ask you to reconsider and revise the city's twisted definition of social housing, so that it prioritises housing for those on income assistance, disability or pensions. Under the current definition, the vast majority of social housing built in the city in the last five years is not available to people with very low incomes. At First and Clark, I urge you to do more to deepen the affordability of social housing units and maximise the number of these units. As an aside, it is also extremely important to me that the residents of the 18 affordable housing units currently on the site of First and Clark not be displaced or mistreated in any way, as many of them are long-term residents and at risk of homelessness themselves. Second, expanded and updated withdrawal management services are also desperately needed in the midst of this horrific overdose crisis. The great strength of this project is that it would provide a floor plate large enough for VCH to operate detox support services using best practices, hopefully increasing the efficiency with which people who use those services could be supported and moved on to the transitional housing or onwards to treatment centres or more stable housing and situations. However, the net loss of detox beds is still a concern. Many friends I know who have tried to access detox services are very clear that deadly wait times are the result of a lack of beds, at least in their experience. So I certainly hope that the new centre would be more efficient, as Dr Daly laid out in her presentation, and urge everybody to advocate for these detox services to be as robust and expansive as possible. Despite these encouragements for deepened affordability and expanded detox services at the site, this proposal still has my full support. I want to briefly address the concerns that many have raised about neighbourhood safety with regard to this proposal as well. For those who worry about having folks with low incomes or who use or have used drugs as neighbours, I extended an invitation to come visit Todd, Dave and myself, as well as our neighbours, at the Cohere Housing Community, First and Victoria. At Cohere, folks from different economic backgrounds, different histories with substance use, live together, not merely as neighbours, but as housemates and as family. The cohesion that is possible between us at Cohere is a symbol of what is possible in our neighbourhood and in the relations between those currently living next door to First and Clark and those who I hope will one day reside in this new project. I'll conclude by thanking the mayor and council for listening and urging everyone to consider the gravity of the housing and overdose crises that we face and the urgent response they require. Finally, I hope that the spirit of inclusion and welcome demonstrated by so many in my community towards this proposal will be reflected in your support for this project. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. And no questions, so that's good. Your presentation spoke for itself. Thanks again. On to Riley Wood. And then Karen Sawataski. I think I finally got it right, sorry about that. Riley Wood. Riley Wood's not here. Okay, thanks. So Karen Sawataski, please.
Yeah, A for effort on those first two efforts, is my last name, but that's...
Sorry, it's been a long day.
You've got it now, very good. So, mayor and council and staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak to this proposed project. I strongly support every aspect of it, and I was not organised to come here by the previous speaker, but I thought he made excellent points and I think I agree with all of them. I live and rent in the Grandview Woodland neighbourhood right now, and I have on and off for probably more than 20 years, starting in 1986, so I'm pretty familiar with the community, the ways in which it's distinct and how it has changed over the last few decades. The neighbourhood means a lot to me, and one of the reasons for that is that because I feel it is, or at least used to be, have a sort of community ethos, which I consider to be welcoming of difference and committed to equality and social justice, including on the grounds of health and income. The project is absolutely in tune and supportive of that ethos in that it provides desperately needed health services and social housing, as well as social enterprise space where indigenous wellness programmes could be based. This is especially relevant, given that our neighbourhood is home to a higher percentage of indigenous residents than most of the other areas of the city, and because the city has previously made a strong commitment to reconciliation. However, in saying that I welcome this project as a neighbourhood resident, I want to emphasise that I believe this project is relevant to and would benefit the city as a whole, and I hope you will give equal weight to the inputs of residents, no matter where they live. It was only a few short months ago that you, as a council, received recommendations from the mayor's opioid emergency task force, and one of the key themes of that report was expanding treatment options, which is exactly what you're being asked to support tonight. Given those recommendations and your endorsement of them just a few months ago, I find it hard to imagine how you could justify turning down or delaying this project in any way. I can't see a way that you could do that and still expect people impacted by the overdose crisis, whether as a user, family member, friend, coworker or just a city resident, to take you seriously on that commitment that you made when you approved those recommendations. It is easy, relatively easy, to pass grand sounding motions, make proclamations and even approve recommendations and plans. It's nights and decisions like this where the rubber hits the road. It's still quite early in your term, but I think this decision before you know, however it goes, is one that is going to be remembered as a significant one in your time here. Some among you may have qualms about approving the project because there are renters living in the buildings on the site. As a renter, that's something I can easily identify with, the fear of displacement. However, I'm going to assume that when you ran for a position that would entrust you with decision-making power over what happens in the city, you did so understanding that precious few of those decisions you are now tasked to make would be simple or stark contrast between one alternative that was all bad and another that was all good. Not just this one, but every single decision you make here involves trade-offs, whether it's of time, resources or opportunities. And I doubt that there will be very many decisions during your term that provide a set of choices where the balance between benefits and negative impacts is as weighted to the positive as this one is. And of course, I encourage you to do all the, that the city and together with BC Housing can do for the existing tenants, as I would with any other project, and it sounds like staff are making good progress on that. So I certainly encourage that. And I would like, you know, because I'm a renter, I want renters always treated as I would want to be treated if I'm faced with the same decision, which I very much might be someday, because I live in an older building myself. I also think that you need to heavily weigh that this is city land, and so you need to, you know, figure out how to make the most benefit for people with this land that is your resource, and I think that it's this project. So I'd be extremely, extremely dismayed as a resident if this council were to turn its back or drag its feet when it had the opportunity to move forward with appropriate speed on supporting these type of life-serving and life-enhancing services and social housing, most especially when senior levels of government are providing significant funding, which what so many of us are regularly calling for. So I think it would be tragic, as well as deeply irresponsible for you to do that. So please don't. And that also applies if you're arguing for rejecting this project at this stage, instead of moving to some kind of decentralised model or going back to the drawing board. I went to at least three meetings about this event, about this project in 2018, and I believe the requirements for consultation have been met and likely exceeded. I note that the groups consulted with included the People with Lived Experience Advisory Committee on Mental Health and Substance Use, which is a set of people that are not often asked their opinion about services like these, and it's my understanding that the project's design and model reflects their input. As a city council, your policy levers when it comes to health issues such as this are quite limited. Tonight, you are faced with an opportunity to use one of those powers you have to do things, to make things better for people with addictions. I hope you'll do what I consider to be the right thing and approve it. Thank you.
Thanks very much. If you'd stay there, you've got a couple of questions. Councillor Carr, please go ahead, and then councillor Kirby Young.
Thanks, Mayor Stewart. Thanks, Ms. Swataski. A pleasure to see you in council again. I think you were here at the beginning when the staff did the presentation, so I'm interested in your response as the former chair of the Renters Advisory Committee to council around the rates, the rental rates that were being quoted in that staff report, and how you would advise council in terms of the degree to which it makes those units unaffordable. The rents were, or the incomes that were cited to match those rents were $41,500 for a studio, $43,500 for a one-bedroom, $58,000 for two-bedrooms.
Well, I think that, you know...
Well, I think that, you know, this is not an ordinary project. This project has more funding and more support from senior levels of government than most, you know, this is not a regular rental project. So I think that what it's coming in is reflects that. That just goes to show you how difficult it is to build new housing and new anything on, you know, land costs, even though the city is the landlord at this. There's still financials that have to be met. So, I mean, by all means, lean harder on B.C. Housing, lean harder on Vancouver Coastal Health, lean harder on the federal government. I think that they're indirectly contributing, probably through VCH. But, you know, lean harder on them and see what you can do, but that doesn't mean stop this at this stage. This means go forward and continue proceeding and negotiating as you can. But, you know, every project is a complex mix of factors in terms of, you know, land costs and what you're trying to do and everything like that. So, I mean, I think that staff and the proponents have probably worked as hard as they can to come up with the financial mix that is sustainable and works for what you're trying to do. And again, the proponents have said this is what they want to do, and they have very good reasons that I've heard before at previous meetings, but also tonight, in terms of the rationale for this type of facility.
You used the word sustainable. Is that something that you and the members of the Renters Advisory Committee were quite concerned about or talked about, and, you know, the rates at which a project would be sustainable over the long term?
I don't know whether we had discussions particularly about that term or concept, but, I mean, we're talking about financial sustainability here. But obviously, if a project is not financially sustainable, it's not going to be supported by the people that are putting the money in. You know, there has to be sort of a long-term plan for it, and it seems like there is a long-term plan for this. So, you know, there's no magic bullet for getting this done, and like I said in my remarks, like just everything is trade-offs. I think this project, if I were sitting in your seat, I would find it easy to vote for this project, but that's not to say I don't understand and empathize with, you know, there are trade-offs here, certainly. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Kirby Young, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. I also wanted to ask a question based on your kind of significant work in the rental area and on the Renters Advisory Committee. I appreciated your comments about community consultation, and as you were mentioning the different groups that you felt had been engaged or consulted, there's one that strikes me that hasn't been, and I'm not sure necessarily how we would, but this is the basis of my question, and that is potential renters of the market rental units. So my question in your experience, because this is experimental, is do you feel that those units would be lapped up, that there will be demand for them? Do you think that people will have, you know, it's going to be maybe a different choice if they are, you know, they have a choice between going into a multipurpose facility like this versus potentially another rental housing situation? So I'm curious how you think that would be.
Well, I think because the stigma is real, and I'm not to say that everyone is operating from that, but the stigma is real, and I think that some people will, you know, choose not to live in this building, probably, if they carry that. And so I think that could be an issue, but I don't see any units. I mean, it's just, I just point to the vacancy rate, you know, the under 1% vacancy rate, and you have units in a very desirable neighborhood located close to amenities. Yeah, I don't see any rental units. I mean, we have terrible units in terrible condition that are very expensive, that are being rented right now because of the crisis-level vacancy rates. So if those are rented, I think that new units in a well-managed building or going in a, you know, a desirable neighborhood are also going to be occupied probably pretty quickly.
Okay, thanks. So follow-up question to that, then, is do you think that in approving projects like this, council has an opportunity to look at different ways to bring in more rental stock in the city by really multipurpose use of sites as opposed to single-purpose use?
I think multipurpose sites are great. It can be. I mean, they bring some complications that, you know, definitely need to be thought through and managed. You know, I also support housing on the Renewed Britannia site, and, you know, people have raised concerns about whether that's compatible and stuff on that site. I absolutely think it is, and I think, you know, we have a couple libraries in our city that have social housing or market rental above them. So, yeah, I think that's a great thing to explore. It's just, of course, we have to think these things through and plan for them. Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Swatzky. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much. That's all the questions for you. We're just past nine o'clock here. We are on number, speaker number nine out of sixty-two, so we'll definitely be going tomorrow as well. Yeah, and just till ten this evening. So just if you are waiting around and you are later on the list, just to let you know that we'll probably get through another, no more than ten speakers. Of course, you're happy to hang around here, but just wanted to let you know that so you could plan your evenings. Next, we have speaker number nine, Scott Delengboom. I probably blew that one, too. Sorry. Up to five minutes, please.
Mayor, Council, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you today. I am here to voice my strong support for this project and to ask you to vote to approve this rezoning. This project will provide ninety much-needed social housing units, a withdrawal treatment center, and twenty transitional units, all of which are very important. This project will, it won't solve any of the crises we're facing, but it will bring the city one step closer to addressing the crises of opioids and housing. Addressing these crises, addressing these challenges needs to take precedence over the more mundane, not-in-my-backyard type of complaints that any project typically attracts. We had some really powerful earlier presentations today, particularly by a previous speaker named Todd, and I think that demonstrates why a project like this is needed. You may hear quite often tonight that this is too big, it's out of scale, but in the midst of the worst housing crisis in the city's history and an opioid epidemic that has claimed many, many lives, I think the more important question is, can a project of this type be too big? We don't have enough social housing units. As the staff presentation showed, our rental vacancy rate is way too low, and in this neighborhood in particular, it's lower than the city average. We need these houses, and they need to be built. If I was to offer a little constructive feedback, it would be that the previous version of this proposal that had ninety-seven housing units was actually a better option, because that way we didn't lose these seven units. And it's a shame that that has happened, although I understand there's some design considerations around that. But it would have been nice to see that accommodated in a way that didn't lose those units. And on a related note, social housing like this, particularly in the midst of a crisis, should be allowed outright. Right now, if B.C. Housing wanted to build a project like this, or a project without the treatment center, but like this, it would be illegal to do so in most of the city. Most of the residential lots are simply not zoned for that, and it should be a matter of outright allowed for that to happen. And the few spots where a rezoning would even be entertained are on busy and polluted arterial roads. And I think that brings up a spatial justice issue and a health issue that going forward on projects like this, that should be something considered where these projects would be allowed off arterials, too. But I do support this one, even though it is not on a busy arterial road. I can understand reserving conditional approvals for the withdrawal center, but I think, as we've heard tonight, it's very important that these facilities be provided, because we do have a serious health crisis on our hands, and any beds and any facilities we can get are needed. I know we have many speakers after me, so I'm just going to conclude here and ask that you please support this project. Thank you.
Thanks very much for your time. Really appreciate it. And you have no questions, so thanks very much. Peter Waldrich, next, followed by Summit Ajua and Jane Turner. Please go ahead. Up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm here to express my support for the project at First and Clark. I'll try to keep it short, because you've lost speakers, and by now, everybody, I hope, knows the numbers. How many new homes will be created? How many social housing homes? How many inpatient beds will there be? How many square feet of social enterprise space? But what I'm hoping this council will keep foremost in your minds as you consider this are the lives, are the people, especially those who are impacted, whose lives are impacted or cut short by the opioid crisis, because they are members of our community, too. It is impossible to count how many lives have been affected and will be affected by this crisis. How many friends, family, children, loved ones? It's impossible to count, and it hurts the whole community, because we are all connected. Every single one of us in every neighborhood is connected. I think we're fooling ourselves if we think that the downtown east side is the only place where services like these are needed, and we can't just pretend that this isn't happening in our society, that this isn't us. The future clients of this project aren't some other that we can just ignore. They are us. And so I ask council to reject thinking of this project as treating some other who is not, who are not themselves part of our community, because the bottom line is that each life is deserving of dignity and hope. You know, today, I spent some time reviewing some of the letters that council has received for and against this project. One person said that money for this project should be put into a, quote, "more suitable, less visible" location. Another proposed the project in order to, quote, "avoid having undesirable elements foisted on a residential area." So as you read and hear comments such as those, please remember that everybody deserves dignity and hope. Of course, this project is not perfect. I think it should be bigger, it should be cheaper, there should be more projects like this, and they should be being built across the city. I wish I had the opportunity every week to come to council and say yes to a project like this, but there isn't that sort of opportunity, not today. What there is, is this project right now, which is an opportunity for this council to do something today. Maybe not today, but you get my point. We are in both a housing crisis and an opioid crisis. This city needs more social housing. It needs more detox supports. It needs better protections for displaced renters. But the best protection is to make sure people have options. Build projects like this, especially with social housing. Raise the vacancy rate. That's how you take power from landlords and give it to renters. And you can't expect any project to be totally perfect. If this council adopts a perfect or nothing approach, nothing will ever get done. Running a city is not about waiting for unicorns to fall into your lap. This is just one project. It won't solve the city's problems, but it will help. It will help the housing crisis. It'll help the opioid crisis. It will contribute to reconciliation, especially through the social enterprise space. I just want to add that I support the message of the protesters here earlier tonight. You know, as we bicker over setbacks and building height and shade, let's remember what's really important. Let's remember how much suffering and injustice there is in this city right now, tonight. This project won't fix that. It won't fix all of the city's problems, but I say that rejecting it will make them worse. Also, just my last point, I want to add that I think the building looks pretty great, actually. I think it's pretty snazzy-looking. So please support this project, and those are my comments.
Thanks very much. No speakers, so no questions to you, so on to the next speaker. Okay, so that's, mark that one and call it later. So Jane Turner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here representing the Reach Community Health Center. I believe you've received a letter from Reach in support of this project. I have the great privilege of having been elected by my community of East Vancouver and Grandview Woodlands as the president of Reach Community Health Center. And I'm here tonight with my colleague, Neil Jennings, who is the treasurer of Reach Community Health Center. They sent two of us here because we feel so strongly in support of this project. I want to talk a little bit about the experience of Reach. Reach has been a community health center on the drive for over fifty years, and we've had some experiences that I would like to share with you, because I think you'll find there's some similarities. When Reach was first proposed fifty years ago, the community resisted. They said, "Grandview Woodlands is a neighborhood and a residential community, and it's not a place for a community health center where you're going to be dealing with those people." Now, this was fifty years ago, and people weren't quite so PC as they are now. And in fact, they referred to our future patients and clients at Reach as those dirty hippies and those kids. We don't want them invading our neighborhoods. There were other criticisms that Reach, as a proposed community health center, also suffered. One of them was that it was the advance troops for socialized medicine fifty years ago. In fact, we did create a community health center with a lot of community support, and there are three reasons why it was appropriate to locate it in Grandview Woodlands. First of all, and this may sound familiar as well, first of all, the neighborhood was woefully underserved with medical services. Secondly, it was accessible by transit. And thirdly, and probably most important, it would integrate services into a neighborhood and not isolate people and the services from community. And so because of that, Grandview Woodlands was chosen for the location of Reach Community Health Center. So Reach has operated and expanded over the last fifty years to respond to the needs, the medical, emotional, social needs of our community. And we've done some surveys, and I think you might find this also interesting. A few years ago, we did a survey of our community, saying, "What's your number-one medical need?" And the answer was housing. I think you're on the right track here. People knew that they needed stable and clean and good housing in order to become more medically We know that there is a crisis. We know that these services are needed, and we applaud and support your building these services for the people of Vancouver, and specifically in East Vancouver and Grandview Woodlands. We encourage you to ensure that the people of Grandview Woodlands can continue to boast that they are the home to the most progressive and most innovative healthcare, both Reach and a management withdrawal center. We look forward to working with you and the team at First and Clark for the next fifty years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you have a question from Counselor Carr.
Yes, thanks so much for taking the time to have two of you come tonight. It's interesting that you talked about some of the attitudes from fifty years ago and what is politically correct may not have been anyway at the time. The Tribune wasn't even around at the time. I'm going to give you a couple of comments that did come in from residents in letters to council, and I'm wondering if you can respond to either the accuracy of the statements in your experience. You are in Grandview Woodlands, Reach, so one of the statements was that it associated the fact that there's enough social and indigenous housing in Grandview Woodlands, we have enough crime in the area. So I'm wondering if you can tell me if you, in your experience, you see associations between social housing and crime?
I see an association between poverty and crime, quite frankly, not so much housing and crime. At Reach, we have opioid therapy patients, so people who are trying to get substitute replacements for the bad opioids that are on the street with safe injections. And we have not, and so we've got sixty new patients coming into, through our doors weekly, on a weekly basis. We have not noticed any spike in crime with our new clientele and patient base. So that's my answer.
Okay, and how long have you been in Grandview Woodlands?
Fifty years.
All right. So another statement that came to us by a resident in the neighborhood is that it's taken fifteen years to clean up the neighborhood of hookers, junkies, and drug dealers. I'm wondering if you can comment on any changes that you may have seen in regards to those kinds of activities, if you associate them or see them in particular parts of the neighborhood or not? I'm just interested in your response as somebody who is providing healthcare services there.
We see a lot of drug addiction. We see a lot of home We see, we see a lot of drug addiction, we see a lot of homelessness, we see a lot of poverty in the neighbourhood, and it actually is increasing over the, in certainly the 40 years that I've been associated with Reach Community Health Centre. That's not a particularly surprising piece of information, given the general increase in poverty in our city and the lack of housing and available housing. I mean, we need a, you know, you're doing what you think you can do as council, I wish that we had a much better poverty reduction plan. Is there a correlation between providing services and increasing street apparent addictions? Not in my experience, but, you know, that's just me.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Do you want to add anything? Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
We've got speaker number 15, Stephen Boas, and then Donato Calagro, and then Colagaro probably, Laura Track, and then Micah Goldberg. So Stephen Boas. I think I see somebody coming? Nope.
No, he's here.
He's here.
He's hidden.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see you there. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to address you. I am a resident, I'm a renter, I live in the notification area about seven blocks away from the unit. And I will speak against this proposal as you see it in front of you. I think it's trying to do too much on one side, and I attended all the open houses and the information sessions on the Grandview Plan. But first of all, if we take climate change seriously, we want climate action, I believe we should be building more wood frame and not concrete buildings. And here's an opportunity to build wood frame. This building that's proposed is too high for wood frame, it would have to be done in concrete with a lot of off casting. There are great examples of wood frame buildings throughout Grandview Woodlands and other parts of the city, here are a few. And I'm also very concerned about having a connection to the ground in terms of healthy living for people who are going to spend their, you know, growing up their many years of their lives in these units as social housing units or rental units. Here's a courtyard in the RM4 zone on Adnax Street. This site is a split zone between I-2 and RM4, and I'll note that the previous detox site is actually light industrial zoning IC3. We have an unofficial park area, it's actually a permitted use in I-2, you can have park or playground in I-2, you don't have to build there, you can leave it as park, and it's been used as a park, and this is a lot of land that is fronting Clark. In the open house, I found it very interesting to see these models with these great big glass boxes. And actually, in fact, the I-2 zoning, you can't build to that envelope, it's not possible according to your own district schedule, so I'm very surprised that planning has shown this to you and to the public repeatedly. We've seen diagrams like this, but you can't build this form under I-2. Outright height is 18.3 metres, you can see the full schedule where you can't build and get the extension to go to 30.5 metres because it's next to a residential street, and there are other reasons why you can't extrude three FSR zero lot line to 100 feet, it just doesn't work. So it's not a fair representation. This does not conform to the Grandview Woodland Plan. The I-2 zone, there's a specific part of the plan that says that the plan does not contemplate any land use changes in this industrial area, and it's very, very specific. Because there are other parts of the plan where they're looking at letting go of the industrial land, and there are a lot of examples there. In this part where it was considered to be let go, staff specifically said it is not to be let go, and that's what made it into the plan. The enterprise space could go into the industrial zone, and it does not conform to the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, despite what staff have said. If you go to section 6.42, specifically about East First Avenue, it says it's supposed to be 100% secured market rental. It's not, it's got a different use, so it wouldn't be even considered under the rezoning policy. It's more than six stories, it's more than a FSR of 2.4, it's well above three. It does not meet the maximum building width, it's not T-shaped typology, and this is just for the criteria to be considered for rezoning. I'm even surprised why it's being considered under the Grandview Woodland Community Plan because it isn't. And I'm also very concerned that it's not 100% secured market rental. And in terms of having welfare rate, I don't really see a lot of welfare rate there. The rezoning forms, notification forms say that it conforms to the plan, it doesn't. The open house panel, well, it mentions that there's a section 6.4, but omits the sections that speak specifically to these lots. And because of that, it essentially invalidates a lot of the results of the open house. And there is this loaded question on the comment form concerning the plan, well, the plan wasn't correctly shown to the public. I'm very concerned about a lot of the other information in the open house. The institutional scale does not fit with our neighbourhood, it's trying to do too much. This is kind of what the Clark Drive looks like right now. And I would say that if we care about future residents, and I do support the housing that's proposed for the site in a form that's compatible for the site as laid down by the plan, and I would support the full 97 units of housing as in the previous proposal before they scaled it back. And I would encourage council to go in that direction and support housing in a form that's compatible, that's healthy living, and find an alternate site for the detox because this mega-scale institutionalised rezoning won't serve anyone well. So thank you for your time, and here's some examples of...
Thanks very much. We're just at the five minutes, so that's great. And no questions, so thanks for your presentation and putting your time in. Then we have Donato Calagaro. Calagaro, Donato Calagaro. Oh, another presentation? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you on the... Sorry. Stephen, you actually have a question. I was a little slow on the draw there.
Sorry, it was technical difficulties.
No problem.
I just wanted to request if we could get a copy of your presentation, because I'd like to try to sort of audit against some of the things that you described there against the Grandview Woodlands Plan.
Yes, absolutely, and I guess this is going on for future nights as well, so I can give a more in-depth summary. Plus, I can also respond to some of the statements that staff made earlier during their presentation.
Well, it'd be helpful to have sort of an audit, that's kind of what you did, but I'd like to be able to look at it myself.
And perhaps you could also consider bringing in another third party, because it's one thing to have members of a public to say one thing and to have staff say another thing, but if there's an independent third party to verify, you know, these facts, to see who's right and whose interpretation of these facts is correct, that might be very helpful for council in the future.
Okay, thank you for this question.
And I will get this information to you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're on to Donato Calagaro. Sorry. Confusion there? Up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Okay, Donato, I'm, it's hard to pronounce, but I'm a product of the Italian immigration to Little Italy and Grandview over in the 1950s and 60s. A lot of the points that I want to talk about are already spoken of, I would like to just reiterate one. First of all, I live across the lane from the proposed site in the centre of the block, where I've lived for 52 years. And I'm against the proposal as it's currently laid out. To touch back on some of the points that were made, the risk of putting an 11-storey tower, councillor, and spending $81 million on a formula that's never been tried before is a risk, and something that we should think about for these important services. Now, I'd like to talk to you about something that's close and dear to my heart, is the three western lots on the site that you can see on the screen. There were two houses there that were torn down sometime before 1966, and the lot was grassed over and has been used as a community park since. We do not have adverse position in Vancouver, where if your fence line is in somebody else's property for decades, you get to keep that property. This park is also subject to that, too. It's been a public amenity for over 50 years in our community. It was used as such because we don't have a lot of parks in that area. Sure, okay, thank you. Because there's no community amenity contribution because of the social housing of this park, of this development. Therefore, we are being removed of one amenity, we're a minus one, because you're going to take that away. GWAC, the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, supports the addition of parks. And it is because we in Grandview, along with Fairview, have the lowest ratio of parks per residence in the city. Everyone else in Vancouver enjoys 1.1 hectares per 1,000 residents, we have 0.4. I'll remind the council, too, that there was a recent purchase of the Arbutus Corridor, which is a long, narrow strip of land added to the Green Pass of Vancouver at a significant cost, and we want to keep our three blocks, three lots there. So it's been there for 50 years. Here's another example of it. One of the businesses is built the bench, the park bench. It's already built, the community uses it. The children play there. Here's a view of the whole park. There's children that go down there to pick the blackberries. If you would have gone there in the last few weeks when we had the snow, it would have been all, you would have seen a whole row of snowmen up against that wall. I played in the park as a child. I'd also like to add, in that shot there, you see a 109-year-old house that's part of Grandview's and Vancouver's heritage that's going to get demolished without any consideration whatsoever. And we'll get down, and here's another view of the park. By retaining this facility, you can see the view of downtown and of the industrial complex. Any visitor, the community, anyone around the neighbourhood, guests of Vancouver, tourists can sit in that park on a day with a blanket and enjoy the great view. I'd like to address the pace of change document that's being asked to be waived. That document was introduced to control the rate of wholesale development and demolition in Grandview after the plan came out in 2016. We've often seen all over the place land assembly, where you have five, six houses in a row that are ready-made for tear-down and development in our area. The 150 units of replacement housing were to control the demolition of affordable housing, but the spirit of the plan was also to control demolition, which annihilating this entire block within the three years of the plan where it's prohibited currently because they're all, all the projects are accounted for, would be a travesty of the plan. And what the spirit of the plan was, was to control disruption in the community. We've already talked about the T-shaped building, the industrial line must be kept industrial, the FSR difference. Also, there should be a three-metre setback after the first three floors in the back lane to allow light to come through. I know there's a gap in the building, but that is only three lots in 12. The rest of it is six and 11 stories respectively on that side blocking the sun out of the surrounding community. This is a hospital-sized facility with 51 treatment beds, 20 transition beds, 15 sobering units for involuntary persons incarcerated in the drunk tank. I'm not very good with that term, but I'd like to use it. There's also five units in there for involuntary people who submit themselves. There's also a statutory right-of-way that's on First Avenue for a right-hand turnbait that will at some point be built, bringing the roadway closer to the building. In concluding, this is a polluted, dangerous and noisy intersection. I know, I've lived there for 52 years since I was six months of age. It needs a rethink. Leave the park, bring up the building, and build either the detox or the housing in a reduced scale. The community will help you, I will help you.
Thanks very much, and you do have a question from councillor Dejanova.
Thank you very much. My first question is regarding the 109-year-old house that you had spoken about. Are you aware as to the heritage or the character of this house? I'm typing up a question right now to send to your staff.
I'm a member of the Grandview Heritage Group as well. The house is not on the Heritage Register, therefore it's not designated, it's not HRA. It's got wonderful street lines, it's in excellent condition, and it'd be a shame to lose it. If you look at all the historical pictures of that site, which there are a lot of while the bridge was being built, the viaduct, you see it in the background, it's been there for 109 years, and some of my neighbours are here tonight who live in that house as well and would probably speak on it as well.
Okay, thank you very much. I will ask staff about that. Sometimes there are homes that they do consider to be added to the HRA, so I'm going to ask about that. Also, in, just, since I have asked you that question, regarding the park space, I know it well as a former park board commissioner, it was actually one of my biggest issues that it was changed, the policy was changed to five-minute walk from green space instead of 2.75 acres per 1,000 people, which is what the goal is supposed to be in certain neighbourhoods or areas. That being said, Hastings Park, which is, you know, some people say it's the peony, but there is Hastings Park, the peony is in Hastings Park, does contribute to East Vancouver in the overall green space. Is your concern about green space here? You had mentioned, you had mentioned that you would support the detox or perhaps the housing on a different scale? What kind of scale, may I ask, would make you more comfortable?
My father died early because of alcohol use. I'm familiar with that, I support those services, I support social housing and housing, very much so. I grew up with the kids in Grandview Terrace who were in the projects, we were poor ourselves, so I understand about housing and also that type of housing being so institutionalised, no courtyard, very little space. There is this space in the middle of the gap for green space, but the community can't use that. But I'd love a building that put one or the other there. I really have concerns about the Sobering Centre, the fact that you're bringing everyone from the city into our neighbourhood who's intoxicated and then being released 23 hours later. But one or the other in a community side scale, leave the park, let the building enjoy it, and four stories would be fine with me, I don't mind, we don't mind receiving a little less light, but saving that park in a little less scale would be good for either services, even making one or the other even larger. That would be, that's what I would look for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and that's all your questions this evening. Thank you, up to five minutes, please.
Thank you. Thanks for hearing from me this evening. My name's Laura Track, I live in Grandview Woodlands, just a few blocks from the proposed development with my partner and my two stepkids. We're renters and we love our friendly, fun and diverse neighbourhood. And I'm really happy to be here to speak enthusiastically in favour of this project. I look forward to welcoming new neighbours to the community that I love. This project, to me, is a demonstration of the values of the kind of community that I want to live in. A welcoming, inclusive, compassionate, caring community that rejects stigma, the othering of people with addictions and intolerance. The folks who are going to live in this development are actually not really new neighbours at all, they're members of my community, our community already, and their needs aren't being met. The needs of so many people in Vancouver are not being met. And so my position on this project, and what I want to say here this evening is yes and to this project. Yes to this project and yes to what it represents, and we need to do so, so much more. I understand that the scale of this project has already been shrunk from 97 social housing units down to 90, and that's moving in the wrong direction. We need to do more. And we need projects like this in all neighbourhoods of the city, all parts of the city are suffering from these same twin crises of an affordability crisis, which I know many of you here care so much about and are working hard to address, and also the opioid crisis, and you've heard that from a number of speakers already. And these are issues that don't just exist in the downtown east side, don't just exist in East Vancouver, but exist everywhere. And these kinds of projects are needed everywhere. I wanted to just say a particular note about the Sobering Centre. This was a key recommendation from the inquiry into the death of Frank Paul in 2009. Frank Paul was an indigenous man who was left in an alley by the VPD while intoxicated, who froze to death. There was an inquiry into his death, and one of the key recommendations coming out of that inquiry was that we need sobering centres. The police need options for people who are intoxicated that don't involve keeping them incarcerated in jail cells, and certainly don't involve leaving them to freeze to death in an alley. Sobering centres are not drunk tanks. I don't profess to be an expert on these things, but my understanding from the Frank Paul inquiry and other sources is that sobering centres are opportunities for people to connect with healthcare. It's really different than a drunk tank in a jail where people are just held until morning and released. People in a sobering centre... People in a sobering centre, my hope at least for this project, and how I understand sobering centres are set up in other places, is that they get to connect with healthcare, with treatment, with other potential supports that they may need as they sober up. One of the other things that I was really happy to hear that I didn't realise before listening to the presentations at the beginning of the evening today was that while this is being talked about as a detox and withdrawal management facility, that it isn't an abstinence-based facility. And I was really pleased to hear that there will be opioid-assisted therapy. I hope that maybe heroin-assisted therapy will be considered, which is being utilised with such success at the Crostown Clinic and in other places where people deeply entrenched in addiction are being provided care, provided life-saving care through the provision of medical safe drugs to consume, because as we know, a key part of the opioid overdose crisis is the poisoning of the drug supply in Vancouver. The last point that I hoped to address as part of my yes and contribution this evening is a real gap in addiction services in British Columbia is the need for services for women with children. As far as I understand, there is one facility administered by the Fraser Health Authority called the Pirdanville House that allows mothers with below-school-aged children to actually access treatment with their kids. They don't have to face that terrible choice of placing their child into care, which can be devastating, or not accessing the treatment that they need. And so I would encourage council in potentially this project or for future projects as part of the and, we need more to be considering the needs of women with children.
Thanks very much. And you do have a question from councillor Dejanova?
It was about that last piece in your presentation, women with children. And there've been a number of conversations around our council table, and I'm asking specifically in this project, one thing that I noticed was missing, but you can't have all amenities in one project, was childcare. So considering there's more than the, more than what's considered necessary to meet our family housing policy at the City of Vancouver, is it a concern of yours that there isn't any childcare in this specific project? And I'll ask staff in my questions, I was just typing it out, how close the nearest childcare is to this new housing?
I don't know the answer to that.
No, I'll ask our staff. But is it a concern of yours?
Sure. I mean, childcare is absolutely a concern of mine. I can appreciate that one facility can't do everything and meet all of the needs. It would be amazing if provision were made for affordable childcare in that facility. The way I understand the Pirdanville House works is that while the women who live there are accessing programming and variety of services to address their substance-use issues, their children are provided onsite care right there in the facility with them. And so of course they're reunited throughout the day, but there is that childcare provision piece.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. That's all your questions. Okay, so we've got Micah Goldberg.
Good evening. My name is Micah Goldberg. I work downtown and I live downtown. I moved to BC in 2012, and I come to you as a relative newbie. I haven't spoken at city council before, but I felt that this proposal offered an opportunity to share my personal interest in this proposal, and I felt that I had a personal obligation to speak to and to provide my support. This is a story that I'll try to tell briefly, which is about my older sister, Raimi, who turned 33 last week. Almost 20 years ago, my oldest sister left home, and she had fallen victim to the seduction of various drugs and became an addict. The issues that she faced were profound. They were compounded by her support services being spread over a vast geographic area and inconsistent access to housing. What is so commonly lost, and I admit I'm buoyed by some of the other speakers who came before me, but what is so commonly lost in these types of hearings is the who, the individuals that these proposals are designed to support. And we accept that this proposal will assist addicts and vulnerable individuals, but these people are also children and friends and parents and, yes, siblings. The Clark and First proposal offers a meaningful opportunity for those who need the community's support to improve their lot by, among other things, consolidating their services to one place. I can only speculate how helpful continuity of service on this scale would have been to my sister's recovery, but my story does have a happy ending. Raimi has been sober for three years, and I am very proud of the progress that my sister has made. And now I ask council to support similar success stories in our city by approving this proposal.
That's it. I'm sorry about that. I was just checking our next list. Councillor, yep, there is speakers, sorry, questions from councillor Bligh.
Hi there. Thanks very much for coming in and sharing your story. I wonder if you could share, and you'd be speculating, but based on you knowing your sister and the experience, what difference the centre like this may have made for her in terms of the time, maybe it was 10 or 11 years from beginning to today? What do you think could have been for her in terms of how long she suffered and what this centre could have done?
My experience is obviously limited, and I don't work in this area, so I'm not going to pretend like I'm an expert in this area. That being said, my understanding is that the most precarious, and I should say my own experience, is that the most precarious time in an addict's recovery is during the transition periods. And I would defer to Ms Wilson, who I think said something similar during her presentation. My speculation would be that if there was some structure, some building that contained all of the services that Raimi needed at once, her recovery would have been facilitated exponentially. Now, I'm not saying that on a particularly objective basis, but on my own subjective understanding, the times where Raimi relapsed or struggled were compounded by needing to collect her services over a wide geographic area and also during these intermittent times where she didn't have access to stable housing.
Okay, great. Thanks so much.
Thanks very much, and thanks for coming in. And sorry for my drop in attention there for a second, but powerful story. Okay, thank you. Athiel Lamb next. Mary Johnston. Thanks for coming, and up to five minutes.
Thank you for having me. I had a big paper prepared, but a lot of the things that I wanted to address tonight have been talked about, but they are important things. I live in Grandview Woodland, and I have for 25 years. I also have worked in it for 22 and have just recently retired. I have worked with families who are vulnerable and are either close to poverty or in poverty and would not be able to move into this housing complex. I couldn't live in the new housing complex as a financially vulnerable senior at this point. I find that the hills is very expensive because it's based on the gross income. So if you have staff, which I did, that were making $40,000 a year or less, and they have children and they could be single parents, they couldn't afford to move into even the studio apartment. And when we're calling it social housing, and from the information that I've seen in the paper, that market prices will be maybe $3,000, $300 for a three-bedroom, that is beyond anybody's reach that I know. I'm very fortunate, I live in a co-op, I face First Avenue. So my balcony, my living room, my three-bedrooms that I live in with my son and my husband face where this new development is going to be, over a very narrow strip of property. So right now, the houses that are behind me shine lights in our face, security lights, have a lot of noise, and they're low, low level. There are three levels. We are three levels in the co-op that I live in with one level of parking. We house 100 people, and 25 of those people are children under the age of 12. In my work in the community, I worked with people who lived five-in-one bedroom. I saw people and talked to people every day for 22 years as the crisis got worse and worse. Some people lived in vans for short periods in time right outside where we worked. Some people lived in basement suites even as professionals because that's all they could afford. I think this is a very hot-button topic. It's very emotional. I have a brother who has severe addictions. He lives in Ottawa, and I really love the idea of housing for people with addictions. However, is that going to happen in this new development? He's in a house or a place in Ottawa that he's just been asked to leave because when he's in his, he's diagnosed with mental health issues, he is quite, he causes a lot of disruption. He has a wraparound service now that's an indigenous one in Ottawa that have got him a psychiatrist, have found housing for him, will help him with his rent, have got him going to NA and AA. These are issues very, very close to my heart, but is this service going to provide that? If this was an addiction centre that was like an intentional community like they have in Italy, where people are actually there for one to three years and can stay longer because they are taught skills, they have daycare, they have jobs, and they do not have to leave, that to me would be something that is very, very acceptable. I worked as an addictions councillor and as a social worker, as an educator. I don't think short-term solutions are the answer. We need longer term. If the building could be lower-leveled, which I do not want 10 stories, and there are no 10 stories at this time, on Clark, on Venables, on First Avenue, and yes, density can be a problem, but I've travelled throughout the world, you can have lower-leveled buildings and still have density. So I would like to say that if it was just social housing with really affordable rates, lots of the places that people could afford that live in our community, that would be great. Or if it was a wraparound service addictions place, that would be great. I have talked, my son and, my husband and I are older, but we came to parenthood later. He has friends that have been in detox centres. I asked them, what do you think? And they said, not for this community. They're not talking about wraparound services. They're talking about where they have been drinking, picked up, and deposited for 24 hours. So I asked them what they thought of it.
I'm sorry, we're just closing in on the five minutes, so...
No problem. Anyway, I think it's an emotional issue. I have friends and people in my building that we are not always in agreement, but we all love each other about what should happen at this development. But I think the scale is too big for the neighbourhood.
Thanks very much for your input this evening, and you don't have any questions? So that's it for this evening. Thanks again for coming. Just like to remind council that we're going to be breaking at 10 o'clock. We do have about, by clerk's calculations, we have about five hours of speakers left, so we'll begin the, those speakers will start at 3 o'clock tomorrow afternoon. Would ask though if you have questions to staff, if you could send them this evening, that would be great because then staff will do what they can. I'm informed to have those questions back to us by the time we start hearing again at 3 o'clock. So I think that's, so, pardon me? Yep, we just have one more speaker this evening, and then we'll be back here again at 3 o'clock. So I've got Damian Murphy on the list, and you'll be the last speaker this evening. So go ahead, Mr Murphy.
Thank you. Glad I made the cut. It'll work tomorrow afternoon. Mayor and council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here today on these unceded coastal territories of the Squamish, the Tsleil-Waututh, and the Musqueam people. Much gratitude and respect. My name is Damian Murphy, and I stand here today to express my support for the redevelopment at First and, proposal at First and Clark. My family settled here in the 70s. I grew up in Vancouver, and I've lived with my partner for the past 16 years in Grandview, where this project will hopefully be built. As a resident of the neighbourhood, I feel it's my responsibility to come here today and to speak out, to show my support, and to stand with everyone in the community who is saying yes to inclusion, yes to accessible housing, yes to public health, and yes to all of this in my backyard. As I stand here, I think of Curtis, of Noah, Dwayne, of Tom, Chris, Clarence. These are the names of six indigenous men that I knew, ranging in age from 26 to 76. Six men who called this community home and who may have accessed every aspect of this development if it had been built during their lifetime. Aspects that include safe, suitable, and accessible housing, healthcare, culturally-appropriate wellness programmes, and location. In my opinion, we've got to keep moving on the housing crisis and the opioid crisis, substance-use issues of all kinds. These are things impacting our local communities, and they are things we can take action on right now without further delay. The project fits within the community plan that our neighbourhood laboured over all these years ago. It fits with the pace of change, in my mind. It fits in a society that values all lives and provides opportunities for those marginalised through no fault of their own. I respect all input and every opinion on this matter, and I only ask that council consider my appeal and vote in favour of this much-needed redevelopment that will strengthen local health and supports social services, expand harm reduction and addiction services, and increase the housing supply for vulnerable residents and others who'd like to call Grandview home. Thank you for listening, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thanks very much. There's a question from councillor Dominado.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, Mr Murphy, for coming. Good to see you again. I'm just curious, you talked a lot about the fit of this project for the community. How do you see it fitting with existing services? As you heard, we heard from Reach earlier, but I know there's a number of organisations that are serving a variety of individuals, and so how do you see the fit with other sort of health and mental health-serving community?
Yeah, it's certainly a complement to those services. When you think of some of the organisations that are in our neighbourhood, serving people who can't afford to live in the neighbourhood, those people end up moving out and moving elsewhere, but they maybe still come back to the neighbourhood all the time because that's their home, that's their communities, that's where the people they know are. So I see it as a complement. It's for people who work in some of these organisations, who can't afford to live in our city anymore. They may make up to $100,000 a year, maybe as a couple, but it's really hard to find affordable housing for those people. So I can, I see aspects of the housing piece to keep people rooted in their communities who are already here. I see it as a possibility for workers who maybe work at Reach or at the coastal health at Broadway and Commercial, an opportunity for those folks to live close to where they work and be able to get to work easily without maybe using a car.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. And that's all the questions this evening. So thanks, council and everybody, for attending tonight. We'll be picking this up again at 3 o'clock tomorrow afternoon in the order that's listed. And sending questions to the staff, and they'll, by noon tomorrow, and they'll try to get answers back to you before we start. And if you send them to the city manager, that would be, that would be great. So I need a motion to recess. Councillor Dominado, sorry, councillor Dejanova, seconded by councillor Bligh. And all in favour? Thanks very much. All opposed, none opposed? That's passed, so we'll see you back here on this public hearing at 3 o'clock tomorrow afternoon.